Down at the far end. Oh, I hope he knows we don't have public. She's here. We're just waiting for Mrs.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's lovely to see so many of our district leaders here for our study session. I'm calling the study session to order and our study session will be about our student outcomes. And I'm going to let Dr. Forless lead this agenda item. And I think we'll be hearing from Dr. Tracy Eastless as well. So.
I think you're gonna have a whole bunch of us. So the gang's all here and we are ready. Chad, we're ready with the presentation when you are. And I have the clicker. And here we go. So this evening, I want to thank all of you for being here. We have members of our teaching and learning team. We've got high school principals, two elementary principals, elementary counselors, and Director Mel from special education, all here to be a part of the work that we are going to share with you this evening. Oftentimes, we ask ourselves, how are our students and how do we know? And that comes in so many different ways. So we're going to spend some time talking about different aspects of how we know, how we are monitoring our students and how we know that. We talk about educational outcomes all of the time. And so I think one of the goals that I have for us is that we get some clarity on what are educational outcomes, what are student outcomes. So when I think about these, I think about them in four categories. Oftentimes, we talk about positive and negative outcomes. When things go well, we have a positive outcome. When things don't go so well, we have a negative outcome. And in school, if kids are learning what they're supposed to be learning and they're graduating on time, we consider that to be positive. But then the opposite can be true when we say, yep, that's a negative outcome. We also talk about instructional outcomes. And I think about this as how teachers design for learning, how, what are the conditions, the environments that we put in place for children to be able to learn. So those instructional outcomes really show up as thinking and learning behaviors. So how are our kids thinking? How are they behaving? How are they making sense of the content that is being shared with them? And then we think about educational outcomes. That's where our instructional outcomes become visible. Those are generally things that we can measure, generally easily measured. They come in numbers such as standardized assessments, they come through in attendance, graduation rates, report cards, grades, and so on. And so we have this interesting dynamic that is happening because oftentimes instructional outcomes and educational outcomes can be tangled up together. So when we think about the essential attitudes and skills in our portrait of a graduate, that lands in instructional outcomes. That's how the teacher is designing for learning. Those are the thinking routines, it's the thinking experiences we want our kids to have. So I want to share for just a bit that through our Teacher in School Leader Grant, we have a design team that is focusing on how do we capture what our kids know, how they are growing and mastering the essential skills of collaboration, problem solving, critical thinking, innovation, and so on. So at Westwood High School, we have 15 teachers participating in a pilot where they are working with students, working through self-reflection around two of those essential skills, communication and collaboration. So that is going to take us down our path to understand, how do we quantify, how do we talk about, how do children set goals for those thinking skills that we refer to as our essential skills in our portrait of a graduate. And I think when we talk to our families, they care a whole lot about not only the educational and instructional outcomes, but a whole lot about societal and life outcomes. Talking about how are their children, do they have a sense of belonging? The outcome of engaged citizenry, the outcome of better health, lots and lots of categories come up in as we think about societal and life outcomes. And so you will hear much about this. We have, under each of these four outcomes, we have a chunk of our presentation that will be able to talk about that. But I don't want to leave this slide without introducing you to a preschooler. So we have a preschooler, and he was so incredibly proud at an assembly to come explain to me why he earned the award of being a critical thinker and an innovator. So when we think about the portrait of a graduate, essential attitudes and skills, it is not just for graduates crossing the finish line of graduation. It begins very early on in their educational careers. And this is the perfect example of a preschooler. And I would love to go on and on and on about what he wanted to share with me with his loose tooth and missing tooth. It was the best conversation I had had in quite some time about his ability to be an innovator and how he defined that. So that, I'm hopeful that that frames a conversation and it'll help to frame the conversation this evening. We're going to talk about student attendance. That is an educational outcome. We're going to talk about special education outcomes through the lens of an instructional outcome. High school graduation rates, again, an educational outcome. And graduation plus in our career technical education outcomes, that is a combination of society and life outcomes connected to educational outcomes that we're looking for. So we've got lots of people that are here and ready to share with you. So as we kick off the conversation around attendance, there's been a lot of information in the news and in the press around chronic absenteeism specifically associated with the pandemic. So we know that before the pandemic, about eight million US students were considered chronically absent. This comes from a research group known as Attendance Works, and they look at large data sets. So we define as chronic absenteeism as when a student misses 10% or more of the school year. So by spring of 2022, that number had doubled to about 16 million. So I know that we have school leaders and school personnel in our audience today that knows that this is real, that we have been working really hard to combat the statistic of chronic absenteeism. So I'm going to turn this over to Arlen and Monica, who are going to talk about attendance. And then we are going to dig into some principal stories about what they have been doing to reduce chronic absenteeism.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So today, I'm going to start with student attendance. In front of you, you have a slide that shows the student attendance of all of our subgroups. And specifically, I want to call out that we are showing 2018-19, 2021-22, and 22-23 data. And the reason that we have a couple of years missing in there is because we want to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples, so to speak. 1920 and 2021 was right in the middle of pandemic. And we did very different, we had different ways of calculating and managing attendance during the pandemic. So it's really not comparable as these three sets are. So you'll see that the data in front of you, you can see that the blue, 2018-19, that was our previous to pandemic attendance. When we get to 21 and 22, which was right after our pandemic, you can see that that's the lowest set of attendance that we have. We've been working diligently with our schools and our principals, our school leaders are working very hard with their staffs and parents to ensure that students are coming to school. So you can see we've had a bit of an increase for 22-23, but we are still not to where we were pre-pandemic. And then I just want to point out that this data was pulled consistently for those three years on April 1st. So that, and the calculation is total days divided, total days present divided by the total days enrolled. So that's comparative for every single one of those years is April 1st.
Thank you. All right. So then the other thing we looked at is, what does this look like across our district by level? So we took a look at elementary, junior high, and high school, and we just compared the two years of 21-22 and 22-23 to see how are we doing with decreasing chronic absenteeism. And as Dr. Forless said, chronic absenteeism means you've missed 10% or more of the days in which you've been enrolled, not necessarily of 180 days. So if a student comes and they're only with us for 80 days, then it's 10% of 80 days, which would be eight days. So it would be individual to each student where the 10% mark is. So we've worked with our, as Monica said, we've worked with our leaders to talk about what can we do to get kids in school? Because we know that in order for kids to learn, they have to be with us. And so, as you can see, elementary reduced chronic absenteeism by 11%, and then junior high by five, and high school, about the same, although some high schools did better than others. Again, these are averages, so we have to take the totality of the data. But in talking with elementary principals, there are two that really stuck out that made a really big impact on attendance. And we have two of them that came here tonight to kind of share their story with you. And Redbird Elementary School was able to decrease their chronic absenteeism by 26%. So they're an outlier in this percentage that you see on the board. And Red Mountain Ranch Elementary School was able to decrease by 21%. And so we communicated with them and said, hey, what are you doing? Because we want to be able to share this, this information with others and see what we can replicate at other schools across the district to see if we can continue to decrease our chronic absenteeism. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Adi Erickson from Redbird Elementary School, and she brought two of her counselors with her to share. And then after she's done, Mrs. Jackie Bycott from Red Mountain Ranch Elementary School will share some of the strategies that she's used at her school.
All right. These are my two counselors, Carly Johnson and Audrey McIntosh. Would not be able to do this without these two amazing ladies behind me. So first, we kind of noticed that our younger grades, they were coming in at like 8:45, 9 o'clock. Teachers would start reading then. So as we were looking at our data, we started with, we kind of have a soft start, a STEM soft start for kindergarten through third grade. We used Asser funds to buy STEM kits for the teachers so they didn't have to like make anything up. It was there for them. They explicitly taught the kids how to use it, and then they created stations. So every single kid kindergarten through third grade starts with that, which that really excites them. They do not want to miss that. They yell at their parents if they're late. So that really helped with that. Then, as you know, we're like, okay, but what are we going to do for the upper grades? So then the upper grades, we started a weekly superstar attendance challenge. And my counselors helped me monitor this. And every single, I have this thing called Principal's Corner where I do a, you know, like a video of myself and, you know, make goofy videos, and the kids absolutely love it. And I announce every single Tuesday, the class winner of every single grade level. So they get announced and they get one of my PBIS tickets, which is worth three mega points in their classroom menu instead of one which the teachers give. And then they have an overall winner, and that can be anyone through K through six, and they get an extra recess on Wednesday. And then we also have a monthly winner, and that monthly winner gets a treat from the counselors. And then I give them a choice of book, whatever the kids vote on, they get a book to pick. And then as we run the weekly attendance, if it's at 10, my counselors are kind of touching base with those parents, asking them, you know, what can we do? How can we help you? We're here to help to make sure, you know, your kids are here. If it reaches 15, then I kind of get involved and I have a meeting with the parents. And my biggest thing is, how can I help? And some of the stories are like heart wrenching. So some of them, Arlinda has helped me with of getting busing there. Just, it's not that they don't want to be there, they just have a ton of obstacles in front of them. So, and then we also do quarterly attendance awards. So those are some of the things that I do. And then I'm going to let my, because my amazing counselors do a couple more things.
And so we created an attendance hub, which was a one-stop shop for the parents to, it has information on homelessness, food resources, our pantry, clothing, medical, and it's just a small little linked up information for the parents because we knew that we needed to meet them where they're at. And if we break down those barriers and they know that they're loved, then they'll come. And we significantly saw the, we see the success. We also have multiple counselor corner videos that we created. It's a very cleaned up version of like a Saturday Night Live. We do funny skits. Someday, we'll be on, if Ellen DeGeneres was there, we would be on there. But it's to, it's those commercials to hit the kids and make them laugh and realize how loved and important it is to be at school. And finally, we also do our February Perfect Attendance Challenge. This was really cool. We connected with our community resource of the Arizona Diamondbacks. And they, actually the students, we had 125 students that had perfect attendance for this whole month of February. And they got tickets to go see the Diamondbacks, as well as the parents and families. They got discounted family tickets. So it was really awesome for the, in that month of February. So great, great connection with the community.
So we also do targeted small groups. So we look at running reports for each grade level with students that have 10 or more absences. And we get that list of kids, we get them together and talk about the importance of attendance, some ways that they could improve. And then we incentivize it by saying, if you come to school 10 days in a row, starting today, you're going to get a pizza party with the counselors. So we've been doing those targeted small groups, grade level wise. And we've seen a lot of success in that. We give them certificates, we take their picture, we're in there with them, we have some music playing. And for example, our last one, we just finished up last week, was second grade. And that group of students, 60% of them hit the mark. So we really see success in that. And then lastly, we have made a school counseling Instagram. And so we post different fun things, students, we post attendance, like facts, different fun things that we do throughout the day. And we try to use all the hashtags. And we're still gaining followers. There's not a ton, but we have been sharing things and trying to reach parents and students that way. We have little QR codes in our office, you can scan them. And I hope to keep doing that as the years to come.
Mrs. Bycott, do you want to share your story? Thank you, Redbird.
All right. Hello. Okay. So coming off of COVID, our kids were so sick of the virtual learning. And school was so boring. They wanted nothing to do with it. So we shifted how we do things completely at Red Mountain Ranch. We kind of had three big pieces that all kind of aligned to the goals that we have as a district. No one in particular stands out more than the other, because really, it was all three of them together that has increased our students' attendance. So the first one, I'll talk about how it aligns to igniting a culture of learning and wellbeing. Our kids, when they come to school, they don't start on the playground. They have a 13-minute window, and I kind of call it like our Starbucks time. They meander in, they're greeted, they're welcomed by name. My PE coach knows every single kid's name. And I'm at like 95% of their names. So they're greeted, then they come into their classrooms, if they can choose to have breakfast or not. When they get to their classrooms, they're greeted by their teacher. And it's a real quick, like, good morning, how are you? They say their name. And that's an opportunity for that teacher to connect with those students individually. So instead of them all coming in off the playground together and it being kind of crazy, they have one-on-one time with each student when they come in. And during that 13-minute time, they're kind of getting settled, they can talk with friends. Our younger grades, they have blocks out, they have Play-Doh, they are, they're just engaged in kind of a nice mellow start to the day. This has allowed our teachers to really make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. So in doing so, we also have a great relationship with our parents. If a student comes in not having the best day, or maybe something happened, or maybe the bus was late. We had a little guy the other day, he was really frustrated, it was his first day riding the bus, he missed the bus, his day started, he was not so happy. That teacher was able to get to him right away because, you know, she saw him coming in and help restart his day. So the whole day wasn't lost because of his morning that was out of his control. So that's one big piece of it. The next thing we did is we redesigned how we do instruction. And I know a couple of weeks ago, we were here and you were able to see a video that spotlighted our design process. And in doing this, and the way that we've realigned everything, our kids are engaged. And they have true ownership in what it is that they are learning. And I know that video was just a quick little snippet of it, but they own it, they love it. And they go home and they tell their parents, hey, this, I'm working on this right now. And we failed, and it wasn't great, but it's okay, because this is what we did instead. And so the parents are watching their kids truly be excited about their learning. And they're taking, our teachers have done a great job of taking our curriculum and integrated in through the lens of design. So I kind of call the design process our North Star. That is, that is what we do at Red Mountain Ranch. And our kids thrive with this ability to be hands-on, they're in the thinker space, they're in their classrooms, they're down the hallways, they're, they're doing tests in the hallways, it doesn't matter where they're at, there's just a lot of, a lot of student ownership with that. So that was the second piece. And then the last thing talks about our, how we engage with our community. So because our parents are hearing their kids come home and saying, this was such a neat thing that we did at school today, they support it and they want their kids to be there. In fact, I have parents now telling me, I'm not allowed to schedule dentist appointments during the day. My kids will not have it. They get mad if they get pulled out. So we're seeing less parents actually pull their kids out for dentist appointments and things like that. One parent came the other day to drop off an instrument. And she's like, I have to tell you, I wish that every single school did this because my little one wants to be here so bad. It's, it's pretty remarkable. So as we're getting kids in from charter schools and touring families and things like that, they're pretty excited about the work that we're doing here. So that is pretty much what we're doing at Red Mountain Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the group?
I was wondering how our principals that are having such success are able to share with the other principals?
Absolutely. It's, it starts with a conversation. It's, it starts with a conversation, and so we have, you've heard us talk before about regional teams, and then that's an opportunity for a group of principals to come together and problem-solve and talk about things like attendance, like behavior, like data, academics, and things like that.
Thank you, ladies, this is incredible. I love hearing the great work that's happening in Mesa, and I just want it to spread like wildfire everywhere else.
I had a question about the parent engagement, so how you, how you communicated with your parents? Were you doing, were you doing flyers, were you emailing them? What, what did that look like?
One of you want to take that, how you engaged your parents? Jackie, you talked a lot. Mrs. Bycott.
Okay, so the biggest thing that we did is we actually had our students invite their parents to our design showcase. And the first one we actually held was four weeks into school. Every single kid, preschool through sixth grade, was able to do some kind of a project. And that was what we did for our curriculum night. So everybody came, and their kids were able to tell them, hey, this is the project that we did, this is what the design process is. This is Scholastic, this is Envision's Math. And our kids led that, and that alone, I'm honestly, it was like seventy percent of our families came to curriculum night. And in my seventeen years of Mesa, I've never seen a turnout like that. So it's student-centered. Parents will come to anything and everything that happens at school if their child is excited and they want to be there. If you just say like, no kids and parents only, your turnout is going to be very low. So we, we had the kids invite them, and that's, that's the biggest thing. You know, we use Thrill Share, we communicate out through social media, things like that, but it really comes from the kids inviting their parents and saying, come check it out, this is amazing.
Thank you. I just wanted to know more about what that model looked like, so thank you so much.
Yeah, tie a kid to it, and they will be there.
Lots of great innovations. Thank you so much for sharing that. That's, that's really cool. Thank you. Okay.
And we're going to move on to special education. So you've heard quite a bit about Spire as an instructional system that is building a strong foundation in phonemic awareness and letter sounds. And this was an investment through Essar, and so Teresa's going to talk to us a bit about Spire.
So Spire is our multi-sensory reading intervention program that we use for Tier Three. And we know that integrity of implementation is really key to success. So we created an integrity checklist that our instructional coaches schedule time with the site principals, and they do observations of every classroom that is using Spire, and they complete this checklist. And it's a pretty great celebration that eighty-three point nine percent of our teachers who are using Spire are using it with integrity. When we got this number of sixteen point one percent, just really going in and looking at where it was not being implemented with integrity, and for the most part, those are our long-term subs, our subs, and there are a couple of classrooms that we would expect perhaps not have at this point be in full implementation. But we think it's a big celebration that eighty-three percent of our, our teachers are implementing. And it also gives an opportunity for our principals and our coaches to collaborate and to do these observations together, and see the progress of our teachers using this program. So the next slide here is our, oops, do you want to go to the next one?
Talked about the ones of the kids exiting out, it's a weird, I don't know why the word student kind of is in there, kind of a weird transition.
So here, we actually, today went back, and there were some additional data we got. We have eighty-two students who have actually tested out of Spire, so it is seven levels in that process. And you can see another great celebration is that fifty-six percent of our students have grown one level, and increasing in that number all the way up to, up here, a little less than one percent have passed all the six levels. So we're seeing pretty great progress amongst our students using this Spire program.
And Spire, just to refresh everybody's memory, that Spire has taught to students that have learning or reading as part of their individual education plan, and that is great to remind me kindergarten through eighth that are teaching and preschool.
Sounds sensible, but it is the same program, pre-K through eight. I don't have the exact number. I can get that for you. Yes, ready for the next one. This is our four-year graduation cohort for our students that have disabilities from 2017 to 2021. The national average for students with disability graduation is seventy point six, so we are working towards that number. And, you know, many of, not many, but we have groups of students that stay till age twenty-two, so the four-year graduation cohort would not be an expectation for some of our students who have disabilities, but this is the average graduation rate, 2017 to 2021.
Is that national, you said seventy point six percent is the average, does that include the students that are up to age twenty-two?
Yeah, the average four-year cohort is seventy point six.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we will keep moving right on along. We're going to continue on to the theme of high school graduation rate. As you know, this is one of our key performance indicators aligned to our Achieve College and Career Readiness strategic goal. Dr. Mallorwine is going to lead us through a conversation. When we increase graduation rates, we see that as a positive outcome, but we also see it as an educational outcome, and as a result of what students have done throughout their educational career. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mallorwine.
Thank you, Dr. Farlis. Madam President, members of the governing board, the slide deck is, can go ahead and pull it up. Our, our key performance indicator was to increase our graduation rate by five percent. And the slide, who puts the slide deck up?
We're ready for the slides to be back on the screen when you have a second. Thank you.
That was our, that was the goal that we set after we looked at our graduation rate from 2022. When you look at, when you look at the graduation rate in Mesa Public Schools, we've always hovered right around or slightly above the, the state, the state average. And I, and I think that I can speak as a member of our sec, our high school team, that we don't want to, we don't want to measure ourselves on state, we want to be much better than the state. And we have, we have, we have some aspirations to greatly increase our graduation rate over the next few years, but we want to do it in manageable chunks. And so we set a goal to increase by five percent. So this is going to be a little of a continuation from the slide deck I shared with you guys, I believe, first quarter, right as the, as the year began. It all kind of runs together, I believe it was in September. So when you look at, oh, I went too fast, okay, I was looking at mine, okay. So when you look at it, like what, how do we, how do we pay attention to our graduate? How do we, how do we tell what we're doing and who we need to target? And so we, we have to look at, we kind of prioritize things. So this, this slide is going to show you our, our graduation rate for all grades. So you take our, you take our ninth graders that are on track, our tenth graders, our eleventh graders, our twelfth graders on track, you put them all together, and this is where this number came from. So this is, this is an indicator of where we'll be. And it's not incredibly useful, but I think it's one piece of information as it all, as it all kind of goes together. But as we start to look at and prioritize, we want to look at our grade twelve students very critically, and we want to look at them about exactly where are we in our grade twelve on track? Because we need to identify those kids and get them into any type of credit recovery, which we talked about earlier in the year. And so as we, as we looked at this, we, we feel really confident that we are on track to meet our key performance indicator. And we know there's some things that are outside of our control. There are kids that have come in, that are part of this cohort, that have since left our, our schools, and we're diligently trying to track them down to clear them out of our system. So that is one thing that we have to account from. But for our twelfth graders that are in school right now, these are the numbers that we're looking at, and we feel confident that we are on track to meet our, to hopefully eclipse our goal. The next one we want to look at is our grade eleven, because this is, again, we want to prioritize where we are, and we want to get these kids on track for their senior year if they're, if they have fallen off pace. So we kind of prioritize and we go through. And then the others, the other slides I wanted to, I wanted to share with you guys, is we started to look, as we've talked about our, we've talked about our ATS I groups, our subgroups, and we want to pay very close attention to our, our subgroups and identify those subgroups in specific need, and make sure those kids are getting the opportunity to get back on track to graduation. So we, we looked at our special education rates across our district, and that's another, that's another data point that our teams at our high schools look at critically. And then as we go through, I wanted to share with you our other subgroups, as we look at our Hispanic population. I'll just pause for a second, so you guys can have a quick look at this, this data. When we look at our, our American Indian population, this is a, this is an area that we, we focus on, is we're building a really cohesive, cohesive partnership with the, with the Salt River Pima tribe up there, and we're building a relationship with them and working to really meet the needs of those students. Those students, we know, were hit very hard by COVID, and they need some extra supports and opportunities to get back on track. So we want to identify that group, you know, specifically, and look at, how do we meet them where they are and get them back on track? Again, our African-American population, we want to look at that subgroup. A lot of our schools have seen that, that could be a subgroup, although none of our high schools had a TSI subgroup identified. We want to make sure that we keep that, all our groups on track to graduate. So again, I wanted to share with you, what are our continued steps? We, we created what we thought was a really good plan at the beginning of the year, and I shared this with you guys again in August through September, and we're staying the course with that. We are still looking intentionally at how are we, how are we increasing our deeper personalized learning experience for our kids? And we're looking at, that is, is your tier one instruction. We want to, whether we're, we're referring to it as increasing our cognitive rigor, or I always use the word complexity, we want our kids to be thinkers, we want them to be critical thinkers, problem solvers, creative thinkers. We know that that comes with our tier one instruction. But then what are we, what do we do when we identify our kid with our screening protocols that need help? We identify those in support, and we, we look to those, to that very closely and critically to get the need in the most at, at-risk groups to graduate. And we always start with grade twelve, and we work through all the other grades, but we always look at our grade twelve right away. We also look very critically at our, at our Algebra One and our ELA courses in grade nine, because we know those are indicators for graduation as well. And then I, I did highlight for you guys kind of a pilot program at Mesa High, our Gold Academy. It was a very systematic, strategic way to identify kids and keep them at their home school. We know that sense of belonging is, is, I don't know if there's any other way to increase academic achievement than to establish a strong sense of belonging. We are hearing that outcome across the board when we talk to kids. And that's one of those outcomes we can't really track, is, is quantitatively as others. But when you hear the stories of why kids are engaged in complex thinking, why kids are working diligently at cognitive rigorous types of projects and learning experience, it's all sense of belonging. So I would, I would be remiss if I didn't compliment the Mesa High staff led by, by Principal Thomas, that they looked on how can we create a systematic way to keep our kids on our campus with a sense of belonging as they're working through the credit recovery process. And it was, it's been so effective, and we've had, we've had some attempts, and we've learned, and we've improved. And the Mesa High staff has been very buoyant in adjusting as we went through. But through the communication process with the team, as you see sitting here, that, that collaborated at a high level, I think every school's been at the Mesa, every school sat down with that team and said, okay, how can we replicate this work at our schools? And we are, we have established entry-level elements of this tier two and tier three type of environment to get our behind kids back on track at every one of our schools. And I'll talk about this in a later slide, but I would want to share with you what we're going to do at each school that can, that we think is going to have a great impact on not only our graduation rate, but our, our academic success rate at our schools. So I wanted to highlight one program, is, I can't highlight all the things, but I want to talk a little bit about the core program that exists at Red Mountain. It's gone on for a bit, a bit of time out there, was, it's a program that's been there for a while, and it has some success. And, you know, Mr. Tannenbaum is, is looking, our, our new principal at Red Mountain, he's looking at the program and looking at what have we learned at Mesa High, what is, what are the other ideas that a team are bringing to constantly improve this program? But as of right now, they identify kids that are, you know, a couple credits behind, and they look at creating an alternative schedule. Some kids are in the program for less periods of time than others, and they look at, they really focus on the seniors and the juniors in the fall, and then they look at the sophomores in the spring. But they're very strategic on how they identify a kid in need. And then the benefits of going into this program is that, again, you get to stay at the home school. We know sense of belonging is, is critical, and that's something that we look at in everything we do. The class sizes are smaller, they also chunk it in nine-week rotations, so kids can go in and out quickly. And so, you know, it, it also serves as a motivation piece. And there's ninety-minute blocks, so there's more times for kids to work with teachers on task and get caught up in, in their core areas that are behind. And what we've seen over the last couple of years, we saw kids that were, were behind in their credits, one hundred and eight kids graduated in twenty-one, twenty-two. This year, the, it is projected, some, you know, we might not get there, but I, I feel pretty confident that we will, we have one hundred and fourteen projected graduates. But this year alone, we've already graduated nineteen kids early, and that's some kids that weren't in our former cohort, so they, they wouldn't count towards our graduation, graduation rate, but we got them to graduate. So we extended their career in Mesa Public School and got them to graduate, which, if we don't get a kid to graduate on time, sure, that affects, that affects our, our graduation rate, but the, the story's not over. We, we won't quit on a kid. And so there's also a number of students there, and I don't have to break down, but a portion of those nineteen students that graduated early. So we're seeing the benefits of this intensive tier two, tier three type of academic intervention. So that's just one, that's one example. I mentioned the core, the Gold Academy at Mesa High, this is what's going on at Red Mountain. So we also have a summer school coming up, and this is, this is another way for, that we extend the school year. And this is a critical time where some kids that just didn't get to the finish line, and we didn't get them to graduate, we can extend the semester, we can extend opportunities for them. And I wanted to share with you guys a little bit about how intentional we are at identifying the right kids. So we go through and we identify the kids that need credits, obviously, by the grade level, and we extend that semester. But the first group of kids, I apologize, I don't know why I jumped to bullet point two, but obviously, we, we jump on our, our grade twelve kids right away. We get them in there. If you're a credit behind or two credits behind, we, we can look at what work had been done that maybe you didn't get completed, and we can get that work caught up over the summer with the teachers, and we can get those kids to the finish line. So that will support our graduation rate. The next group we look at is we look at our students by grade level and who are behind, and we get them in to get them caught up, so they can start their next school year on track. So we don't have to put them in a credit recovery tier two or tier through program. That, again, is a motivational piece for kids to stay on track. And then we identify grade eleven, because that would be our juniors, and we want to make sure that our juniors don't end up in that, in this area where the seniors are. And then we open it up for all credit deficient kids. So we, we do get every kid in there that needs to be in our summer school, but we identify them by need and very strategically, and, and we make sure that the spots that are available are, are taken up by the most priority. And, and then anybody looking for credit acceleration, we do try to recommend them go to the Mesa Public School District-driven summer school, because there's plenty of spots there for credit, for credit acceleration. And then the last thing I'll share with you, and I'm open to facilitating a conversation or answering any questions, but we, all, all, all the principals have been highly collaborative this year and, and very mobile in their collaboration. It, it does kind of warm the heart, and, and I'm very proud that you have our assistant principals traveling to other schools to learn from other assistant principals. It really lives into our idea of building these teams to distribute expertise, because not everybody has the same strengths, but when we collaborate, our collective self-advocacy of a team drastically increases. And so through those, through that collaborative spirit and And so through those, through that collaborative spirit and, and that commitment to the team, every high school has decided that they're going to create their own tier three and tier two environments. This is academic driven for credit recovery, but within that they're going to create our tier two behavior environment as well. We know that vaping is, was one of the concerns that we've had in our district. And we have been placing kids in alternative placement for multiple type of violations. And it, it, it doesn't serve as a support for the child. You know, these are nonviolent offenders and, and they're not really a threat to the learning environment or, or a threat to keeping like a very orderly, safe environment. They're almost self medicating and self harming a little bit in regards to some of their behaviors. So we want to put them in a more, a more, I guess tighter environment with more safeguards and a little more procedures. And we want to keep them at their home school. And then ob, obviously give them opportunities to earn their way out quicker. Normally we place a kid at our, excuse me, our alternative program, it's two semesters. Well, we want a kid to be able to move in and out of there in six weeks, nine weeks. And so again, this gets back to what can we do differently to build a sense of belonging? And that, that home school relationship is powerful. And this was all driven by our, our leaders at our high schools. So because it's their challenge, I have confidence that this challenge will be met. The next piece is that this is designed for really struggling students academically and behaviorally. And we know when kids are working through adolescence, they go through different challenges. But to get them at an alternative setting and away from their home schools, not what we're about and not who we want to become. So this is another step to getting there. And then this is again, is a designed, this is again, designed as an alternative to suspension or an alternative to referral to an alternative school. We got to keep kids on our campus. That doesn't mean that there isn't a consequence for a behavior. That doesn't mean that they don't need an alternative setting, but I don't know, but we have all decided that that alternative setting needs to be at the home school with people that know the students and can connect with the students and provide an environment for these students to be successful. And so that is the, that is the plan and all six, all six of our, of our comprehensive high school principals are planning this as well. Is Dr. Pillar at our alternatives. She is creating her own plan that is slightly different because she has a slightly different campus, but same, same idea. And then lastly, I'd like to show a very quick video that Mesa High produced that really kind of highlighted their, their Gold Academy to tell that story. A little maybe remind you, because I know you guys know about it, but a little bit of a, a little more in depth. And then I'm open for questions and conversations. So whoever's behind the curtain, please.
Chad, if you click on the link, you'll see the, the Gold Academy video and it is actors that are playing the parts, but they are emulating typical students and their stories. I see your cursor, Chad. And created by students.
We don't have video or audio. I linked it in the slide deck and.
So what we will, what, everybody has access to the video. So in interest of time, we'll keep going through our presentation. I can take a look at the video and the link and then we'll get that to you in another way.
My, my apologies about the, the technical difficulty. I, I just throw the link in there and kind of hope it magically kind of works. So again, that was my mistake. My apologies.
Ready for discussion?
Board members, any questions? Dr. O'Reilly?
I just, I'm really glad you're working on all the grade levels and all the students because it's a four, graduation's a four year rate. And if a student leaves in September ninth grade, they're not a graduate four years later. So, and I, we heard a lot from you and from other superintendents about the impact of the pandemic and with students. And, and that will affect the graduation rate. So I'm glad we're, we're working with all of us. I'm really glad to hear all of that. With summer school, do the students have to pay for it or do they, is it covered?
It's covered. The students in the credit, in the acceleration summer school, I think there is a fee depending on, on the credit. But for any credit recovery, anything that we need to do to get kids on track, we take care of that absolutely.
Do you have any, I know we're doing, doing things on personalized learning. Is there anything that's, that we're doing with those students to kind of get them caught up or get them more engaged? An out of left field kind of question, but is, are we doing anything with them to get them more engaged in terms of their learning?
The kids that are credit deficient?
Yeah.
Well, our first, our first priority is to try and get them in that credit recovery pathway and get them caught up. As, as far as are we intentionally doing anything like those deeper personalized learning lessons and experiences? It depends on where you are in that. If you are, if you're a grade 12 student that we don't think we can get, we're not sure if we can get you to the finish line. We are really doing everything we can to get you to that finish line. If you are a, say a, a student that's at risk as a freshman, or you go into like the core, you might only be in that core for a block of time a day. Then that, then those personalized experiences can happen. But in the credit recovery frame, as we have it now, we, we're not, we, we're not getting, you know, the inquiry lessons at the level that we would like or the, or the design thinking lessons that is going on at Red Mountain Ranch and extending all the way through our feeder patterns yet.
It, I'm just trying to put pieces together that we've been hearing about.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Is that one last question?
Sure.
We're close to the end of the fourth year. Any estimate as to what the graduation rate might be?
What do I think our graduation?
You don't have to make a, you don't have to make a guess if you don't want to.
Oh, he's been guessing.
I'll bet, I'll, I'll bet, I'll bet on this team of leaders and I would say, you know, as a goal of 81%, I, I think we're going to be 84 or better.
From 76, so that's a huge increase.
That's what I believe. And, and that may be, that may be a, a stretch goal, but I just believe in this team and I believe in the hard work and their collective efficacy. You know, it's, you know, it's a pleasure to work with them. They're the ones that do the work. I just get to present the, the successes. But yeah, I think 84% is where I'll rest my.
All right. You are on video and recorded, Randy. Here we go. No pressure.
I'm close.
No, that's what I said. No pressure to them.
Other questions?
I have, I have a question. I think maybe the principals can, can help. So I, I keep hearing the, the importance of school is where kids feel that they belong. However, when I sit at the SAG meetings, some of those kids don't belong, feel like they belong. And when I take a look at the graduation rates for say our Hispanic students, our American Indian students, our African American students. And their graduation rates are, or at least perceived to be on track lower than the average. So I guess my question is, how are the obstacles that these students are facing being met at their, at their home schools? If we disaggregated the data with various subgroups of kids, how are we meeting the needs of those subgroups of kids? Cause it looks to me by the data that, that we're not, we're not hitting all the kids like we should.
Well, if, if I, if I could, Mr. Gilmore, would you be willing to come up and talk about the work we've been doing with our American Indian population at, at Westwood? Which I think has been super intentional and commendable.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I was hoping that you would volunteer because that question was really asked of you. Because I, I, I know of your program and if you could explain the intention and some of the programming and, and, and what you're, what you're doing to help our kids.
Yeah, I've been glad that this year it's been, we've been having a wonderful relationship with the Salt River community. I would say that sense of belonging was evident at the beginning of the school year with some of the, the behaviors that we were seeing and the challenges that we're seeing. And we know that all the, the cultural implications be, being between two communities. And so we're trying to realize that there and create that sense of belonging. I have to give credit to Yvonne Dennehall and the Salt River team. Yvonne is our new Native American Education Program Director. And she has been boots on the ground at Westwood to create that sense of belonging to, to bridge to that community. And we're seeing evidence of that. We also have hired two new liaisons that are working with the students weekly. They give me a report. They worked with 120 kids, 50 kids. We're getting Salt River to come over and help us with four year plans, E caps. The Native American National Honor Society, they had that evening. They had a beautiful dinner with that. They're doing parent lessons. So they're really trying to create that sense of belonging, not at, only at Westwood. But when we go to those Nate meetings, like on a Wednesday evening, you know, you have representatives from Mountain View, from Skyline, from Red Mountain as well. And so there's real intentional work that's going on. I would say about two weeks ago as well, we had the Salt River Superintendent come out. Members of the council who happened to be all Westwood graduates come talk to the students to give them encouraging words. It just, I know I'm missing other things, but it's been real intentional this, this year with our liaisons in meeting the needs of our Salt River community, not only the Salt River community, but we also know that we have representation of many different tribal communities at Westwood as well. We have, in the second year, we have Navajo language at our school and we have a full class with that. Next year, we have enough for part, year two of it. And we all know that you have to have two years of a, of a language to go to a university and it's great that we have it. Unfortunately, we don't know the, if he can come back next year because his wife is also a state representative for Northeast Arizona and the Arizona State Legislature. So their schedule's a little bit busy and he can't make that commitment. So if you know any Navajo language teachers out there, we have a strong need for it at Westwood. But there's been raw, real strong intentional work that's been going on between the two communities, between Mesa and the Salt River. And I could finally say, I could come up in front of you and say that the work is meaningful and, and it's going real strong. I mean, we had members, Dr. Mallorine was there, Dr. Forless was there, Holly Williams was there, Dr. Eastless was there. I mean, just the, the bridging between the two communities just to support our students has been tremendous.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I know for the sake of time, Ms. Hutchinson and I would love to follow up with you on some more things. But I know like, just for an example, Principal Buckley's been doing some work with the implementation of a Latino leadership class that they can help her, her larger Hispanic population feel connected. Dr. Oliver's worked very intentionally with the Black Student Union at Mountain View as we want all of our students to feel a sense of belonging in a place in our system. A lot of people kind of will look at a large high school and think that that's not like a good thing. But in my, my view, a large high school has an entry point for every student to feel a sense of connection and a place of belonging. And our principals are aware of our subgroups and they're doing different things that had, that they haven't done in the past to build that connection. Now it's going to take time, but I, I feel we're, we're working with integrity through all our subgroups.
I, I, I don't doubt that for a second. And, and I can't help but piggyback on what Ms. Bycott said about her students being so engaged. And I know, and I know Principal Gilmore, that, that you are creating programming that is, that is keeping these students passionate and engaged in their learning. And, and I think that type of programming, what, no matter what school it's at. And, and Ms. Buckley, I know you've been doing a lot of things, Mr. Oliver as well. And, and that if we've got programming that can say for a Navajo language is the foreign language requirement, that kids are going to be passionate about learning that tribal government for a government credit. I know that you're doing some of those things. So engaging kids and, and meeting them where they're at and engaging their community and engaging the parents. I, I, there's a lot in that model that I think we can learn from. And, and, and I see at the high school level, you doing that, that model. And I, I appreciate the work that you're doing, all of you, all of you.
Thank you.
So next I'd like to turn this over to, is it Dr. Eastless or, yeah, Marla Loria, which is, is, is good because she has been a major architect in this work that we're going to lead to as, as we are creating our graduation plus experiences. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Madam President, governing board members. I know it's getting close to the time, but so I just wanted to.
Don't worry. You, 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 you've got your time.
Okay. It's, it's all good. I'm here to really kind of talk about some of those other data, data points. And specifically about graduation plus being one of the models and where we've been collecting some data this year. And as a reminder, it was about a year ago I was here when I presented on the graduation plus model. And which is that we want every student to graduate, not only with their high school diploma, but one or more of these pluses. So that they are competitive, not only in this current workforce, but in the future workforce. But, and every high school does a great job of offering certain elements of these pluses. But we know as we started to look at data this year, that not every student has access to every plus. And so it was really important this year that we created design teams to really start looking at the data. Where are we at and where do we want to go in regards to each one of these pluses? Because we could put on a great marketing plan and say, hey, every kid has access to this, but if they don't, then we are not really living into our promise. Some of the data points on here, we looked at industry certifications. That's something that falls in the career and technical education world, which is my world. We saw 128% increase and yes, that is correct. We checked the math about three or four times with teaching and learning and chat GPT, by the way, and got 128% and from the previous year. And I, we attribute that to a big push and support through one of our partners, Elevate Ed AZ. Currently we're at 213 certifications are usually earned in this last couple of weeks of school. And some even do boot camps over the summer to earn their certifications. Earn college credit during the fall. I did a presentation with our Elevate Ed AZ partners as they have worked shoulder to shoulder with us on increasing dual enrollment. We saw 40% increase from the year before to fall enrollment because of that partnership and really doing a big push at the high schools with teachers and Mesa Community College to get students enrolled into college. The other one is advanced diploma designations and that one encompasses a lot of different opportunities for students from everything from a by literacy seal to the arts seal to graduating from Avid. And we really haven't collected that from a district level. So this year we are. Right now we have about 570 students to date that are on track to earn one, at least one of those diploma designations. And we're looking at how do we increase those diploma designations and make them accessible to all students. And then we have our college and career action plan, which is referred to as kind of our E cap. And we have, we've already increased to date how many students have completed their E cap. But we still are only about 50% of our graduation, graduating seniors who completed it, well, less than 50% last year. So those are one of the areas we're really looking at to increase. One of the pluses that I wanted to just do a quick deep dive into is our work based learning. Again, another area that I oversee this year, thanks to the board and superintendency approving, we hired three CTE career coaches that are ran through the CTE department, but they're placed at high school campuses. We did a pilot this year with Mountain View, Red Mountain and not Dops and Red Mountain and Westwood. Sorry, that was a faux pas. But next year, Dops and is getting it. So I was probably thinking about the hire we were doing. Next year, all six high schools will have the career coaches. And then I'll be in conversations with Eva to see how we can scale some of the work that coaches are doing for those students as well. This is in partnership again with Elevate Ed AZ and the elements that are on there are what they are really keeping track of. And which is great because they have a whole system that our career coaches are actually reporting in real time. The students that are in internships, job shadow, how many kids are participating in career fairs, career exploration activities. And we have over 178 employer interactions at those three campuses. These numbers will more than double next year as we scale this program to all six comprehensive high schools. What I really love is that four, that almost 4,000 mark for the career fair. That means at least 4,000 students had one, at least one interaction with an employer. Hopefully based on their interests is that's kind of how we're forming our career fairs. It's not just a, hey, come and, and get free merch from, you know, Empire Cat, but that we're aligning it to their interests and their, kind of their inventory. aligning it to their interests and their, kind of their inventory that they're doing, so that interaction with that employer is meaningful. This is just a quick snapshot of the dashboard that ElevateEd is creating for us as the coaches are inputting. This meets their KPIs as they have some grant funding, that they have to make sure that they are meeting certain metrics, which is great. Again, it's another system that's put in place that we are able to see that data and really kind of set our own goals in kind of tandem with the ElevateEd AZ goals. So Westwood has the most comprehensive dashboard because they've been in ElevateEd School for two years, so we can see areas that we've had great growth and then areas where we need to improve upon. The last data point here is more about the career and technical education data that we keep track of every year. Unfortunately, this data comes on the tail end, so we get it after the school year is completed. These are performance measures that have been in place forever. It's part of the Federal Perkins, Carl D. Perkins Act that requires states to measure these certain data elements. But it always shows us that CTE generally does better in the areas of graduation from state level, data, reading, math, science, industry certifications, and even technical skill attainment. The two areas where we are struggling with is a non-traditional participation. Those are students, we'll say females in more male-dominated careers like welding and automotive. How do we get more females in some of those program areas? And then placement. Placements are where, what happens to the student the semester after they graduate, so the fall after they graduate high school. Thanks to Dr. O'Reilly, several years ago, he connected us with the National Clearing House, so we can see what students are in college. But then any student that's not in college, we have to get a hold of them. We have to call them, we have to find them on social media somewhere to figure out where they're at. And that is becoming more and more of a challenge, of finding those students to see, are they in some kind of job related to their CTE program of study? So that is one that we are continually working on. And I think that was it. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? I'd like to thank you, because this type of work is what gives kids purpose and meaningful real-life experiences. And that's that engagement again. And we've got to figure out for each of our kiddos, what, flipping that switch, what is their meaningful engagement? And this is just a terrific opportunity to, all of our kids. And I really like how you mentioned that we still have some, you know, obstacles to overcome, like gender obstacles, and maybe even minority kids, and equity, giving kids, making sure that every kid has that opportunity. But, I mean, we've seen tremendous advances, as we know, from our corporate partners and other ways in which we're really creating meaningful experiences for all kids.
Well, and I think, real quick to that, I think as we see more students, we see our work-based learning engagement levels go up, we're going to start seeing that post-secondary matriculation go up, which is part of placements. We're going to see more students earning college credit because now we're aligning certifications to dual enrollment credits through Mesa Community College, which again, if you earn more dual enrollment, you're more likely to matriculate to the post-secondary and finish that certification, credential, or associate's degree. So I believe as we are focusing on these grad-plus elements, we're going to see them simultaneously start to rise. Quick example will be our Empire students with the internship we have there. Ten students are now enrolled in Mesa Community College's Think Big program, which is an associate's program through Caterpillar. Those ten students had no idea, interest that they were going to enroll in college. And we have ten students that are now enrolled, getting Mesa Promise money. And so I just see that actually growing exponentially as we have more career coaches on the high school campuses and bring in more business and industry partners and our community college partners to make this work.
Dr. O'Reilly?
This kind of underscores what I think we should have as an indicator for student outcomes, which is not just high school graduation, but what is the handoff and are they successful afterwards? So not just does everyone have to go to college, and we have who goes to college, community college, who goes to a certification program at community college, but who goes to work and who has a job, and who doesn't, and what are we doing about helping that student make a handoff? Because there are students who are going to go to college, we couldn't keep them from going to college. But there are some who don't know what their pathway should be. And we really should focus on, are we helping all students find their pathway and do the handoff and see if they're successful? I think that would be really a useful thing for the district to focus on, and not just graduation and the experiences we're giving them in high school, but as Chandler said when they came to the Board of Regents and came to us, they said, are our kids really college-ready? What's happening to our kids after we leave? And I think that's an important thing that as a board and a district we should be aware of.
Terrific comments, okay. Any other, do we have anything, any more information? No? Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here and helping us understand these measurements that we are taking into consideration in the third quarter and all the stories, they really, and the data. Thanks for researching evaluation, putting all the data together. But thank you all for being here and helping to enlighten us as to how our kids are doing. All right, at this point, we'll break for, a short break until 6:30 where our meeting will resume. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment of the study session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
With a 4-0 vote, we are adjourned of the-
Would you all stand for a moment of silence, please? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please remain standing. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mrs. Helen Hollands, and then our National Anthem, which will be performed by the Stapley Junior High Band. And this is a performance that is videotaped. So I'm calling the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mrs. Helen Hollands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And...
I want to thank you all for coming here tonight. Wow, we've got a full house. And there's going to be a lot of joy in this house tonight. So we welcome you and all of you that are here to celebrate friends and family. At this time, we'll have a video on our Governing Board meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members serve without compensation and volunteer countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. Once recognized by the governing board president, please state your name. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or governing board member will be responsible for the board's decisions.
Please remain standing. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mrs. Helen Hollins, and then our National Anthem, which will be performed by the Stapley Junior High Band, and this is a performance that is videotaped. So I'm calling the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mrs. Helen Hollins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I want to thank you all for coming here tonight. Wow, we've got a full house, and there's going to be a lot of joy in this house tonight. So we welcome you and all of you that are here to celebrate friends and family. At this time, we'll have a video on our Governing Board meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members serve without compensation and volunteer countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. Once recognized by the governing board president, please state your name. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or governing board president will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to review the agenda, and at this time, if a board member would like to pull a consent agenda item because they're undecided or intend to vote no on an item, please let me know at this time. Seeing none?
Great, I do have one, one second. I just have to see what letter it is. Okay, item H from the consent agenda, and under the administration personnel regular, the personnel request for administrators' board addendum, so that we can discuss the TO addition, Table of Organization addition, for the leadership coach for the Next Education Workforce.
That's a separate agenda item, so...
But the lawyer asked me to mention it this...
Okay, okay, we'll do, we'll review that part of the agenda when we get to it, and I'm sure you've got a procedural thing that you'll do at that part of the agenda. Excellent, Dr. O'Reilly, thank you. Okay, so we have pulled consent agenda item H. Then at this time, let's take a look at the governing board calendar. Dr. Forlis?
Thank you very much, Madam President. We have an exciting opportunity coming up on April 20th at 6 o'clock, is the Mesa Public Schools Foundation Auction at La Cendya's Country Club. Many of you know about our Mesa Public Schools Foundation that does such a great job investing in our students, innovation grants for teachers, and just the common good of our community. So I encourage you to attend. If you want to know more, there's lots of information on the Mesa Public Schools Foundation website. April 21st at 5 o'clock, we have Young at Art, a great opportunity to see artists from all ages throughout Mesa Public Schools, demonstrating all of their talents. April 25th, we have a governing board study session. We are going to learn about AVID, and then we are also going to add a conversation, a continued conversation around the bond and budget continuation that many of us call the override, but that is truly a budget continuation. So that will be during our study session, followed by a governing board meeting at 6:30. May 18th is a collaborative meeting in this room from 7:30 a.m. till 9:00 a.m., where elected officials from Mesa Public Schools, the City of Mesa, City Council, Mayor, and their team, and then our administrative team will be meeting here to talk about joint efforts that we're working on throughout the city. And then May 19th, 5:30 to 8 o'clock, is our International Baccalaureate Commencement Banquet. The IB Coordinator Team is looking for two governing board members who are interested in attending, so if you are, please let Mrs. Head know, and she will RSVP for you. May 23rd is the last governing board meeting before Graduation Day. Governing Board meeting will be here at 6:30, and then we are all looking forward to Graduation Day of 2023, which is May 25th. And that concludes us through the end of the year. I will stop there because we've got a busy agenda. How about that?
Thank you, Dr. Forlis. Okay, this is a real celebratory part of the agenda. We will, first of all, have the superintendent's update. Dr. Forlis, back to you.
Excellent. Madam President, members of the board, it's my privilege and honor, and those of you who are attending with us this evening, to talk about the celebrations of Mesa Public Schools since our last governing board meeting. So here we go. We know that the work that we do is based in our commitment to the promise of, to our community, to know every student by name, serve them by strength and need, so that they graduate ready for college, career, and community. That centers us in the work that we do, and you're going to see lots of celebrations of that this evening. I had the great honor of attending Arizona Brain Food's millionth bag celebration. This was on March 30th. Volunteers and special guests from Mesa Public Schools, the City of Mesa, as well as the Mayor of Gilbert, came together to put the organization over the 1,000,000th mark and recognize a significant contribution to children in our community. Arizona Brain Food combats food insecurities by distributing thousands of bags of food weekly to students at more than 100 schools in the valley, including many of our students. When you travel into a school on a Friday, you know when the Arizona Brain Food bags have been delivered. Kids are super excited about taking those home. To learn more about the organization and how you can get involved, very simple website, azbrainfood.org, a great organization here in Mesa. Speaking of partnerships, on April 5th, the Adams Elementary Community, ICANN, and the Mesa Chamber of Commerce gathered to celebrate the expansion of the ICANN After School Program with an official ribbon cutting. The ICANN program provides free childcare to low-income families. Thanks to ICANN, students at Adams and Longfellow Elementary Schools benefit from academic support, recreational activities, and STEM experiences offered throughout the organization. It's an amazing, cost-free program due to just tremendous philanthropy. You can learn more about ICANN at iccanaz.org. And I think we've got some of the folks here on the next slide, right here. Here we go. Last week, we broadcasted another informative Facebook Live episode highlighting our team teaching approach and partnership with Arizona State University's Next Education Workforce. This collaborative model is being implemented in 30 of our schools throughout our district. We have a goal to spread this. We have had visitors come from throughout the United States to visit our schools in, throughout the valley, as well as, most recently, we had over 20 administrators from the Netherlands that were coming to visit to see the great models that our teachers and leaders are implementing. During Facebook Live, I was joined by Krista Adams and Chris Gilmore, the principals of Stevenson Elementary in Westwood, who shared the innovative work being done at their schools to tailor the teaming model to fit the unique needs of their students and staff. We discussed how classrooms are designed to change the teaching and learning environment to better serve teachers, which leads to better student outcomes. So you can check out that episode on Facebook Live at Mesa Public MPS AZ. And lastly, we talked a little bit about this earlier in our study session, Salt River Week was held at Westwood High School. On March 31st, our Native American Education Program culminated Salt River Week at Westwood High School with a rally for students who are part of the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian Community. The focus for the week was on four-year academic planning and educating students about the dedicated campus resources and support specialists available to help them stay on track for graduation. We know that it takes a village to raise our kids and get them through school and beyond, and we are so grateful for this partnership. I was joined by members of our superintendency team, as well as the SRPMIC council members, Deanna Scabby, Weba, Gray, both Westwood alumni. Boy, did they have great words of wisdom to share with the students about the importance of being engaged, and really to understand that school is a time for exploration and to ask questions. Also joining us was District Partner Miranda Johnson-Moya with Salt River Schools, who shared stories of inspiration and achievement with students. Our district serves hundreds of Native American students, and Westwood is home to one of the largest Salt River student communities in the East Valley. We are grateful to our network of partners and the important role they play in sustaining the systems of support that serve the diverse student communities that are part of Mesa Public Schools. And lastly, on April 4th, Mountain View High School officially unveiled its new Performing Arts Center. The state-of-the-art, called the acronym PAC, Performing Arts Center, definitely has that wow factor. It is home to the school's vibrant fine arts program, with spaces for choir, orchestra, band, audio production, guitar, piano, graphic design, and much more. The two-story facility boasts approximately 40,000 square feet. The space features four ensemble rooms equipped with the latest recording technology and equipment, seven practice rooms, a piano lab with 24 electric keyboards, three instructional classrooms, and an audio recording studio. The building's large auditorium and lobby with seating for over 180 will provide perfect venues for performances as well as presentations. And I think it's really important that whenever we do any school modernization or redesign or renovation, it is truly a community effort, and the community comes together to identify what those priorities are. So I'm so grateful for our taxpayers who made this possible, as well as our community members that were so invested in this design. Mountain View's principal, Dr. Mike Oliver, says that this modern space is designed to let students' imaginations flourish and help their aspirations to become reality through the arts. And I completely agree. And lastly, we know that it was National Librarian Day last week, so during my recent visit last Wednesday to Booker T. Washington Elementary School, and I think she's in the room, I think I spotted her, I highlighted National School Librarian Day on Instagram Live. I chatted with Stephanie Stork, Media Center Specialist, who is a 15-year Mesa Public Schools' library professional. She shared some useful tips and tricks for parents seeking to help their child make progress on their reading skills. Her biggest takeaway, let your child read what interests them and then build from there. Our libraries support students, families, and staff by providing access to materials and information to develop their imaginations, give, guide investigations, and generate ideas. We select, acquire, and organize resources to best serve our school communities, as well as provide the tools to enrich and enhance each student's journey as a learner and a reader. And as I always say, literacy is a currency, and I am grateful for the work we do in our libraries. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. It's always so great to hear your perspective on the things that are going on in Mesa Public Schools, and there's great things going on in Mesa Public Schools every single day, and it's so wonderful to hear about them from your, from your perspective. At this time, we also now are going to recognize two student groups, the Red Mountain High School CTE students, who won the 2223 State Tech Challenge Competition for Technical Theater, and also the Poston Junior High School NAL students, who won the state championship for the 23 National Academic League Competition. Board members, if you'd join me down at the dais.
Celebrating successes is just one of the ways that we ignite a culture of learning and wellbeing in Mesa Public Schools. We are committed to recognizing students, teachers, staff, and administrators for their achievements. Tonight, it is our honor to celebrate some of our district's outstanding students for their achievements in academic and career and technical education competitions. So I think you're all here, and you would like for me to get started, so we're going to do this, right? First, we will start with our Red Mountain State Champion CTE students, who won the 202223 State Technical Challenge Competition for Technical Theater, also commonly known as Stagecraft, at the Arizona Thesbian Festival. Students, as I announce your names, please take your place up here on center stage, and we're going to take lots of pictures of you. Cory Annamark Chalk in 12th grade, come on up. Camilla Garcia Gonzalez, our 10th grader, come on up. Celeste Woodson, a 12th grader, come on up. That is such an appropriate trophy. When I first saw you coming up, I thought, of course, Stagecraft, she's bringing a prop. But here you are, it is your, it is your award, how awesome. So let me share some background about the Arizona Thespians and the annual festival competition. Arizona Thespians is a group of educators, students, and professionals who are dedicated to promoting theater education in our schools and community. The organization has more than 130 Thesbian troops and 3,700 members. It is one of eight career and technical student organizations, which we call CTSOs, in the state, designed to develop academic success through applied academics, promote choice and identification of career options, while fostering skills in teamwork, communication, and collaboration for students, all the things that we know make for a successful life. The Arizona Thesbian Tech Challenge is part of the annual festival, where teams of four students compete in multiple technical areas essential to Stagecraft. These areas include cabling and focusing lights, cable rolling, costume quick change, props changeover, tying knots, and drop folding. That's a lot, that's a lot, a lot. Our Red Mountain CTE students came out on top in this year's competition to earn the first-place trophy in the State Tech Challenge. So I'd like to ask Cory to come on over and just say a few words on behalf of your team.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to, I guess, say thank you to everyone, both for recognizing this award, and it was a really fantastic opportunity, I think, for everyone involved, getting to compete with like 60 other teams in different things that we'd spent months practicing. I'd also like to say thank you to the other team member who couldn't, unfortunately couldn't be here with us tonight, Damon Reedhead, as well as our director over there, Mr. Erickson, and as well as James Delago. He was invaluable in this victory. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cory. And like Cory, I would like to recognize Matt Erickson, the Performing Arts Department Chair for Theater, and he's also a CTE teacher and Thesbian troop director. I know how proud you are, how hard you work, and the dedication to your students is just really commendable. So if you would like to, Mr. Erickson, if you want to come on up, and we would like to have you join in a photo with our governing board. And if you are here to recognize these outstanding students, will you please rise? We would like to congratulate you as well. There they are. They're all standing. All right, next, we will recognize... Are the chocolate chip cookies ready? I hope so. That's right, or I'm out of time, even worse, better. Next, we will recognize our National Academic League Competition State Champions from Poston Junior High School. Students, as I announce your names, please take your place center stage. You kind of see how this worked. We're going to hold our applause till all of our NAL students are announced. So here we go. Charles Adams, come on up. It's so hard to hold an applause, isn't it? Cory Kane, come on up. Ryder Campbell, come on up. Annabelle Clarkson, there she is. Brett Dunn. Allison Halsted. Ally Hunt. Aspen Wyatt. Joshua Ledesma. Liam Ledner. Caleb Martineau. I said that correct? How'd I do, Caleb? Close? Okay. I get to try it again. James Martineau. Ally Meldrum. Annie Melzer. Grayson Pugh. Madeline Ralph. Joel Root. Lucas Root. Ariel Surfustini. Did I get it? I hope I... Aurelia Surfusti. Did I get it? All right, thank you. Claire Solberg. Slade Stale. How'd I do on that one? Staley. Slade Staley. So my middle daughter's name is Athanasia, so I am so conscientious of saying the words correctly, and I'm not doing so well. So here we go. You kind of see how this worked. We're gonna hold our applause till all of our NAL students are announced. So here we go. Charles Adams, come on up. It's so hard to hold an applause, isn't it? Cory Kane, come on up. Ryder Campbell, come on up. Annabelle Clarkson, there she is. Brett Dunn. Allison Halsted. Ally Hunt. Aspen Wyatt. Joshua Ledesma. Liam Ledner. Caleb Martineau. If I said that correct? How'd I do, Caleb? Close? Okay. I get to try it again. James Martineau. Ally Meldrum. Annie Melzer. Grayson Pugh. Madeline Ralph. Joel Root. Lucas Root. Ariel Serfustini. Did I get it? Aurelia Serfusti. Did I get it? All right. Thank you. Claire Solberg. Slade Stale. How'd I do on that one? Staley. Slade Staley. So my middle daughter's name is Athanasia, so I am so conscientious of saying the words correctly, and I'm not doing so well. So here we go. Connor Torrance, but I love, I love the correction, thank you. Connor Torrance. Kayden Wagner. All right, you're gonna, I'm gonna brag about you, and then we're gonna celebrate you. How about that? Let me share some background information about the National Academic League Competition. Each year, teams compete during the regular season to determine the state champion, and then go on to qualify for the national tournament. Poston Junior High was the best of any other district teams to win the Arizona League Championship and reach the National Elite Eight. So not only did you shine in Arizona, you went on to shine at the national level. This exciting, single-elimination national tournament is held virtually. Poston progressed through the bracket to the finals, and with a heartbreaking 56 to 60, 58 to 60 loss to Central Davis, they became the 2023 National Academic League Runner-Up. So you have a huge accomplishment that you have, that you have received this year. So we are so very proud of you, not only for your state performance, but also for your national performance. So Caleb, come on up, and I'm gonna ask you to say a few words as our resident 8th grader. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm honored to be speaking today with our, about our National Academic League team. I want to start by expressing my sincere gratitude to our amazing coaches, Ms. Kessler and Mr. Lau, for their unwavering support and guidance throughout all of our learning. We couldn't have done it without them. I would also like to give special thanks to our grammar coach, Mrs. Lyle, whose expertise and attention to detail helped us improve our English skills. Additionally, I want to express my appreciation to our scorekeeper, Mr. Stone, our judge, Mr. Wagner, and all of our amazing parents for making this possible. When I think of NAL, it's not just a competition, it's the friends we made along the way and the team we built. We all shared a common goal: to compete at the highest level to represent our school and our district with pride. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that participating in the National Academic League has been a great experience. We have learned so much, not just about academic subjects, but also about teamwork, communication, and perseverance. We have made new friends, gained new skills, and created memories that will last a lifetime. Once again, I want to thank our coaches for their support and guidance. We couldn't have done it without them. And I want to thank my amazing teammates for making this such a great, rewarding, and memorable experience. We are proud of what we have accomplished and look forward to competing in academic pursuits in the future.
And if the academic coaches are here, are they joining us this evening? Come on up, Mrs. Kessler and Mr. Lyle. Okay. All right, our Director of Communications is also, he's trying to be a stage manager as well, so we are assembling. Oh, there he is, yay! Of course. Mr. Hacker. Oh. Mr. Hacker II coach just arrived, so we are gonna scooch in for one more picture. And now they can hold their awards. We know we have a lot of Poston fans. If you're here to support these fine young kids, will you please stand? We would love to recognize you as well. So that concludes our student recognitions. If you would like to stay with us, we're gonna keep going on with our meeting this evening, but if you would like to celebrate elsewhere, our feelings will not be hurt.
Got it, got it. Yep, got it. Thank you. Okay, at this point in our agenda, we're at the personnel requests, and we have a recommendation to approve the personnel requests. Dr. O'Reilly, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve the personnel request and the classified non-renewal list. And I, and I will do the addendum second. So just, this is just the personnel request and the classified non-renewal request approval.
Okay, so just to be clear, Dr. O'Reilly has moved to approve the personnel requests that include the non, the classified non-renewal list. The first two lists, not the third, which is the addendum. Okay? Do I have a second to that motion?
Kiana Sears seconds.
Kiana Sears seconds. At this time, is there any discussion by the board? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask for the vote.
Kiana Sears votes in affirmative.
I have 5-0 vote. You have approved the personnel requests, including the classified non-renewal list. I'll entertain a second motion now from Dr. O'Reilly.
Move we approve the personal request administrative addendum. Is that the correct one? Okay.
Dr. O'Reilly has moved that we approve the personnel requests, including the addendum. Is there a second?
Kiana Sears seconds.
Kiana Sears seconds. So now we can have discussion? Is there any discussion?
I would like to make an amendment, a motion to amend that, to accept or take out, strike, the table of organization change, adding a leadership coach for the next-generation workforce. Okay, I want to move that we, we strike out. We do not approve the item that is the table of organization change. Okay.
In other words, you want to strike the new education workforce?
The addition to the table of organization. Is that clear?
So what you're asked, okay, just to make sure that we have a clear motion, my colleagues. Dr. O'Reilly has moved that we recommend the approval of the personal requests on the addendum, except for the leadership coach position for the next education workforce from the table of organization. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I have a second to the addendum, the amendment?
Can you, can you clarify when you say you want to remove the table of organization?
If there's a second, I think I can clar, once there's a second, I can clarify.
I'm so moved.
So you second the amendment?
I second the amendment to move to a discussion and then vote. Oh, we have to vote on the amendment?
No.
Yeah.
Correct, right. So we, I need a second on the amendment that he, did you just second the amendment?
I can't have, can I have him clarify his request? Can I withdraw?
Not until we get, not until you second.
So if his, okay. Because I was just trying, it's just hard because I'm trying to clarify, because we don't, you know, we don't get the chance to talk about this until we're...
Correct, correct. So it's, it's okay to second, and then we can talk about it.
Okay. I'll, I'll keep my second. Rachel Walden still moved.
To second his.
Okay, okay. Okay. Okay.
So I have a motion to strike the table of organization change for the addition of the next education leadership coach, and approve the rest of the addendum as written.
That's correct. And that is what Mrs. Walden has now seconded. Okay. Any discussion?
First, does Mrs. Walden have a question?
So, so you're, so...
Oh, Mrs. Hutchinson? Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please clarify the amended motion before...
Okay, the amended, okay, so the first, okay, the amendment is that we would, that we would strike the leadership coach for the next education workforce position from the table of organization. That's the motion on, that's the amendment at this time. Okay? And then Mrs. Walden has seconded that amendment. Okay. And I believe Mrs. Walden would now like to ask a question of Dr. O'Reilly. Is that right?
Yes, just that, to allow you to have the discussion, I think for you to bring this to the board, because, you know, we don't get to talk about this any other time, for you to present your explanation and rationale for, for the request.
Thank you. That is, really, I wanted to have a board discussion and just bring it up to the board. I don't think this is, this will create a new district office administrative position. I don't think creating a new district position for a leadership coach for the next education workforce is appropriate, because, first of all, I don't think we should be adding a new district administrative position, and this is a new position that wasn't there before. Student enrollment's down, number of teacher positions have been cut. So adding a district position, I don't think is appropriate for that reason. I think the next education workforce is how we do business. That's where we're going. As, as Dr. Forlis said, it's in 30 schools, it's gonna be in half our schools at the end of this year. We have a lot of staff, a lot of district staff supporting schools, and I think, I think what would be best for this initiative is if they adapt to this. If we're serious about implementing the next education workforce, the district office needs to change what staff do, not add another specialized district administrator, just like our schools and teachers are changing what they're doing. Mesa's using federal Title II funds to pay for the share of this position. I've heard from many classroom teachers that they'd like to be paid in the summer and outside of school, outside of the school day and school year, so that they could get paid to learn and get training. And I think that money should be targeted for that. I prioritize providing the, the training of classroom teachers, what they want, over adding another district administrator. And we're also being asked to put on the table of organization, which makes the position permanent. So if you create a permanent position for a temporary need with temporary funding, you know what will probably happen? It will never go away. It may be renamed, but it will probably never go away. So to me, it's much better if current district staff support the next education workforce efforts in schools. We should direct Mesa's money towards training our classroom teachers, not adding another district administrator. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. That's my opinion about this. And I'm glad, thank you for letting me raise those concerns that I have.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. Does anybody have any additional comments to make?
So the next education workforce is getting a lot of attention. And, you know, we heard in the introduction, we had people from Norway and everything, so do you feel that the, or I guess this really question is for you, Dr. Forlis, then how, how can we redistribute this work amongst our existing staff? I think Dr. O'Reilly brings up really valid points about it to help foster the interest without having to add a, a permanent role.
That's a really great question, Mrs. Walden. And I will tell you that the, adding this to the table of organization, I am requesting your support to align our resources to our initiatives. And so we have been working very closely, as you know, with Arizona State University, to implement the next education workforce across our schools, as it looks different in different schools, as you well know. So this position is funded 50% by Arizona State University, and then the other 50% would be funded through federal grants, Title II, that Dr. O'Reilly talked about. So what we know is when you implement a new initiative, that changes have to occur, systems have to change, the way that we think about the work that we do, the way that we align teachers' work, the way that we think about working with our community partners differently, and so on. And so that requires support. And what we see is when principals are going through change, they are asking for support. I want to do this, but can I please have support so that I can do this work and also meet the expectations of what the model is? The 50% of the funding from Arizona State University is to help, because right now, we don't have anybody identified to help coordinate the hundreds of tours that have come through our schools, the amount of requests that we see, we receive for helping other districts as well. So that would be the 50% portion would be working for ASU. The other 50% would be working in Mesa Public Schools, supporting our school specifically, but it would be a Mesa Public Schools employee. So we, and again, we don't know exactly what this looks like. We do have a job description. I had shared that with the board a while ago. So as we implement, we need to also provide support. So that is my request, is to align our resources to support this.
Do we know how long ASU's committed to providing 50% funding?
They are committed to 50% this year, and then we've got a plan to look at them funding it up to 100% next year. And the other part of, on the table of organization, is that I've also deleted a district position, so it would be, we are not, it would, at the end of the day, it's not adding an additional district position. The number of 192 administrators will stay the same adding this position, because I've reduced one as well. That's also on the table of organization.
Would there be a possibility down the road of, if this role was of, you know, fact, like, really factually looking at it, if this role was no longer needed at eliminating it?
Yes. We review cycles regularly, as Dr. O'Reilly mentioned. That can become a habit. We have started new initiatives in Mesa Public Schools. We have started new initiatives in Mesa Public Schools for over a decade, we hired somewhat, we hire people to lead that work. The work changes, it morphs, and so we've kept people that are continuing to lead. So that, that would be a task of saying, let's take a look at program evaluation, is it getting us what we need? And if we no longer need that program, then we repurpose the position or eliminate it.
I hear you, Dr. O'Reilly, what you're saying, and I also believe that as our entire administration now in, with 50% and climbing of our schools doing next education workforce is what we do, so everybody needs to be on board, so I hear that. But I also hear what you're saying, Dr. Forlis, that we need that additional support for some of, especially some of our quote-unquote baby principals who are starting this and really need that support. So I'm wondering if there could be perhaps a compromise to where perhaps it doesn't go in permanent table of organization, but that we okay this position for a year and see how it goes, and then revisit it after the year and say, okay, did this really make a dent? How are we incorporating our current superintendency to meet the needs of our principals now that 50% or more of our schools are in, under next education workforce, because that should be our model? I don't know, that's something I thought about, that that might be a nice compromise to give it a year. I appreciate that you lowered, you know, administration by one to, so it made it even. I think you're looking at the big picture, and I appreciate all that, but I'm just, I, I see potential of amazing things for this position, but I also understand Dr. O'Reilly's concerns, so I feel like a compromise would be, hey, let's see how it goes this year, and then revisit it.
Are there any other comments?
So would we have to, would, if, if Dr. O'Reilly was in favor of something, that would you withdraw your amendment and, and withdraw your motion to do a new amendment?
No, we'd have to vote on the amendment, and then we can start over again. No problem.
I offer a new amendment?
No, we have to vote on the amendment that is presently on the table. So it seems like we've, we've had, this is a good discussion. The work is incredibly important. We have nine elementaries, two junior highs, and two secondary schools that are expanding this program. We've got six elementary schools, two junior highs, and two special schools that are launching the program. We have five elementary schools, one junior high school, and a special school that's exploring the program. Five out of our six high schools are doing this program. Five out of six. And, and, and this work is, is incredibly important. We've, we've, we've toured our schools, we know that this, this work is important, but we also know that our principals and our teachers' plates are full, and I see a district person possibly being able to assist by taking some of that off their plate. And if we can take some of the work off their plate, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing from my, my board, fellow board members is, is that that's a good thing, however, there's some concern about it becoming a permanent position, though we know that we just did, that in this amendment that we just put up, put on, that positions aren't permanent, because we're removing two positions. So let's take a, shall we take a vote on this amendment, which would eliminate this teacher-coach position from the addendum and start over again? So are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Can I see your votes, nay, in this, for the amendment?
Okay, so the amendment has failed by a five, five, no, excuse me, by a four-one vote. Sorry, I gotta move my computer. All right, so I will entertain another amendment. I will entertain another amendment. Do I have another amendment?
I have to help you.
Okay, I can help, we can do this, we can do this.
And we might need the help of Mr. Wing on how we write this as an employment add to the table of organization, so we might need your creativity as well.
So then, in laypeople's terms, I'm trying to put this position on for a year.
Well, what we could do is just vote on the original motion, and the original motion is to accept the addendum. As is.
And I just want to remind the board that every administrative job is a one-year-only commitment.
Okay, right. And I, I worry, well, no, sorry, I'm not going into discussion. We have a motion on the table, we have a second. So we can, okay. What I, what I was thinking is, is that if we're trying to attract someone to this position, it being on the table of organization would be a way that we could probably get more candidates and maybe highly qualified candidates for this position.
Then how do we just look at this new position that we might be a little bit concerned about, to make sure it just doesn't slip through the cracks?
Well, I think that's what our job is as a board. Our job as a board is to make these decisions, as we are doing tonight. And we've eliminated a couple of positions tonight, if we accept this addendum, and we would be adding one. So at that, at that point, it's, it's within the power of the board, and it would be our responsibility.
I think it's important to point out that there were two positions eliminated, so we haven't increased our administration. I know there's a perception that our, you know, that any public school district, not ours, but any public school district, that they're top-heavy in administration, so that's a, I mean, that, that's a factor for me in considering this position. And another factor is just that, you know, I've spoken to a lot of teachers, there's a lot of interest in, in this program, but it's, it's not going to be as successful if we can't have a point of contact to ensure that we are following it with fidelity. And I, and I feel like that's something that we're going to see in, in this role. I, I really, really appreciate what Dr. O'Reilly said, and I agree with those considerations, but then I also have to weigh in. This is moving forward, this started before I was on the board, what are we going to do? And, and how are we answering these principals' needs and our teachers' needs that are, you know, maybe there's points of confusion, maybe there's efficiencies that somebody from the outside can look in and help gain to improve the success of this?
I would also like to add that I, I love next education workforce. As an educator myself, I would love to be on a team like that. I, I'm trying to get my son on a team next year as a freshman. So I, I love everything that it, it offers, and I would hope that in looking for a coach, that we look for somebody who lifts and builds and provides opportunities for small fails forward as we're trying to grow this and make it what Mesa Public Schools is really all about.
With that, I would love to call for the vote.
Want to make my comment, the, I, I too like this program, this seat, this is a program, the way we're going, and I think we need to move towards institutionalizing it, if that's the way, if that's what we're doing, then our principal coach, our three-area superintendents, all the, the, all the specialists of the district and all these other folks that we have need to be in line, and, and that's really my concern, rather than giving one other person the responsibility instead of all these people who really are responsible for what's going on in the schools and things like that. So, but I do appreciate that, as, as Mrs. Walden said, we don't get to talk until we come in here. And so I really appreciate that we were able to bring this up, have a conversation, think about it, think it through, and, and this isn't the board arguing with each other, this is actually us discussing a topic. And for those watching in the audience or at home, just understand, that's how the discussion, that's how you have a discussion to board me. So, thank you.
Well, and I, and I do really like what you said about the institutionalized, I mean, and that's why I, I, you know, I think we'd have to make a note, ask Dr. Forlis to make a note, that we do, we do reevaluate this in, in a year, because I, I agree with your sentiment that this needs to fall upon our, our current, our current staff, once it's, once it's settled, become part of something that everybody's used to.
Certainly is a program that we let grow organically. We started it with Westwood and Stevenson, and it has caught fire. And, and I like, I like what you said, that there ought to be a point of contact, and somebody who's responsible, and it doesn't mean that others now don't have responsibilities that they've been having already. So with that, I, I believe we've had our discussion. Are we good? Okay, so I'd like to call for the vote at this time on the original motion.
Can I see yours?
Says aye. Yours is aye. With a four-one vote, the motion carries, and we have approved the personnel requests with the addendum. And that means good news for the people in the audience, because now there's going to be some folks that are going to be celebrated. And I'd like my fellow board members to join me in front of the dais. Ms., Dr. Forlis will now introduce some of our new administrators.
All right, the moment that you all have been waiting more for. Madam President and members of the governing board, with tonight's approval of the personnel requests, we have several new administrators to celebrate. So please join me, you have joined me in front of the dais, to celebrate them. So let's get started. Will Josh Buckley please join me at the podium? It's been a while since he's been up. I'm just saying, it's been a while since he's been up here. It is my pleasure to introduce Josh as the incoming principal at Highland Arts Elementary. Josh is currently serving as the assistant principal at Jefferson and Wilson Elementary Schools. Josh began his teaching career in 2006 as a social studies teacher at Skyline High School. He also taught at Queen Creek, Dobson, and Red Mountain High Schools. He's also served as a Title I improvement specialist at Jefferson. He has a bachelor's degree in secondary education from Saginaw Valley State University, a master's degree in collegial leadership, that's a nice name, from, I like that, from Grand Canyon University, and a master's in educational administration and supervision from Arizona State University. So congratulations to Josh. I'm so happy that you have your new leadership role. I'm going to ask if you'd like to say a couple of words, and then we'll do pictures and handshakes and all the good stuff.
I am so incredibly honored to be able to come into this position at Highland as a student who, as a kid who grew up in the arts, who was in band from fourth grade to 12th grade, who was drum major his junior and senior year of high school, who was in every high school play, who was in a punk band that traveled around the Midwest playing shows, being at a school with, with an arts focus and that idea of having students think like an artist. That's what I've done my entire career, and I wouldn't be where I am if it weren't for the arts as a student, as an adult. So I am incredibly honored to fill some very big shoes of Christie Cuddy over at Highland Arts, and I can't wait to meet the staff tomorrow and just get to work, making sure that every kid who walks through our doors every day gets those opportunities to think like an artist and be successful. So, thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to invite Cynthia Majewski to join me at the podium. There she is. Now you know the drill, this is how this all works. All right. Cynthia is the incoming principal at Longfellow Elementary. She has worked for Mesa Public Schools since 2020, most recently serving as the assistant principal at Salk and Taft Elementary Schools. She's also served as an assistant principal at Porter and Irving Schools and a Title I school improvement specialist. There seems to be a pattern, right? We groom through teacher leadership. Cynthia has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Idaho and a master's degree in educational administration and supervision from Arizona State. Cynthia, congratulations to you on your new leadership position in Mesa Public Schools. I'd ask if you'd like to say a few words, and then we will introduce you to the board.
I just wanted to start by saying how blessed I am just to be here and to be taking over the role as the principal of Longfellow. I wanted to take this time to thank my family, my friends, my mentors, the students and the communities who have helped me get to where I am today. Thanks to their endless support, wisdom, and guidance, I am standing here in front of all of you. I'm honored to become the principal at Longfellow and cannot wait to make a long-lasting impact in Mesa. Thank you so much.
We needed a yield or traffic circle or something. Alrighty, now I would like to invite Genesee Montez to join me at the podium. Genesee is the incoming principal coach. She's worked for Mesa Public Schools since 2002, most recently serving as the principal at Jefferson Elementary. She has served as principal mentor since 2018. She's also a facilitator of a leadership development program for the East Valley in Mesa, as well as a national avid staff developer. Genesee has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from New Mexico State University and a master's degree in educational administration and supervision from NAU. Genesee, congratulations to you and your new leadership role, and we are so excited to have you join our team. And I'd like for you to share a couple of words, and then we'll do pictures, you know how this works.
Well, I would like to thank all of Mesa Public Schools for the support and the opportunity of giving me this chance to be the principal coach. I am excited to be able to help, to serve, to guide, and support our new leadership in Mesa Public Schools. And I would like to thank my family, my husband and my family, but also my extended family, my JAG fam for always being so supportive and being here for me, and of course, all of my mentors, which many of you sit up here. So thank you for the opportunity, and I am glad to serve Mesa Public Schools. It is my home, it has been for 21 years, and I would not love any other place more than Mesa Public Schools. Schools.
All right, Dewey, it's your turn. Here we go. Come on up, Dewey. Dewey Best is an incoming assistant principal at Mesa High School. He has worked for Mesa Public Schools since 1999, most recently serving as the team leader at Mesa High. He has also served as a high school English teacher at Skyline and Mesa High Schools, as well as a team lead at Rhodes Junior High. In addition, he's coached a variety of high school sports. Dewey has a bachelor's degree in education from Northern Arizona University and a master's degree in educational administration and supervision from Arizona State University. Dewey, congratulations to you. If you'd like to say a few words, and then we'll move on to pictures.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. So first, I just want, I got a lot of people I need to thank. First of all, I need to thank my wife. She's rocking the purple tonight, and that's kind of a big deal, because for 25 years, she's worked at that school on Brown and Lindsey, so that shows you how much she supports me. And I got to thank the amazing administrative team at Mesa High School. I've been a team leader there for the past three years, and through their mentorship, I've been able to grow and learn and get better every day. And I want to put that same things out to the staff and faculty at Mesa High, because they're amazing, the best staff and faculty in the state, and they make me want to be better every day when I see the work that they do. So, and again, board, superintendency, thank you for this opportunity to serve Mesa Public Schools. And one final thing, at Mesa High, we have a legacy assembly every year. And it's a legacy assembly, we invite back alumni to come and inspire our students, so they can give examples of what they can achieve, and that achievement starts at Mesa High. And then this year, we had our wrestling coach, Anthony Robles, as a guest speaker, and he said something to the students in the assembly. He said, "To shine, you have to grind." And I remember that quote hit me hard, and I was like, you know, one thing you'll get from me every day is I'm going to come grind so our Mesa High students can shine. Thank you very much.
Now I would like to invite Renell Walker to join me at the podium. Renell is the second incoming assistant principal at Mesa High School. Renell is currently the assistant principal at Legacy Traditional School in Gilbert. She previously worked for Mesa Public Schools from 2018 to 2021 as a special education teacher and team lead. Renell has also taught special education at schools in Washington DC and Tennessee. Renell has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Washington Adventist University and a master's in educational leadership and administration from Grand Canyon University. Renell, we congratulate you and welcome you to Mesa Public Schools again. Probably when you left, they said, "Just wait till you come back." And so we were here waiting this whole time. So if you would like to share a few words with our governing board and the rest of the audience.
Wow, this is not nerve-wracking at all. But I just want to tell everyone, thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be back in Mesa. My colleague kind of called me out there, I'm wearing the wrong colors. But I always welcome, yeah, I welcome opportunities to go shopping, so. But I just wanted to say thank you again, and I really look forward to working with the team at Mesa High School and just serving the community and the students of Mesa High.
Alrighty, HR has been very, very busy. Here we go. Next, I'd like to invite Jessica Moya to join me at the podium. Jessica is the incoming assistant principal at Franklin Junior High School at Brimhall. She has worked for Mesa Public Schools for 18 years and is currently the school instructional coach at Franklin at Brimhall. Jessica began her teaching career in 2005 as a teacher at Franklin and Patterson Elementary Schools, later serving as a curriculum and instruction specialist. Jessica has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of New Mexico and a master's degree in educational leadership from Northern Arizona University. Jessica, congratulations, we are so proud to have you, and if you'd like to share a few words.
Madam President, members of the governing board, Dr. Forless, and members of superintendency, thank you so much for this opportunity to serve Franklin Accelerated Academy, Brimhall Campus, and Franklin Junior High as the assistant principal. After 15 years and counting as a Franklin parent, eight years as a Franklin classroom teacher, six years as the Franklin Curriculum and Instruction Specialist, and one year as the instructional coach for Franklin at Brimhall, this is one role I have not yet held. I look forward to partnering with Principal Abrams and our amazing staff to provide our students and their families with the best educational experience possible. Thank you.
Director of Curriculum and Assessment, who is replacing the position from Dr. Sean Enright. He will not be with us because he's still in Montana, so I'll just give a quick overview of Christopher Guglielmo, I practiced this, Guglielmo. He is joining Mesa Public Schools as the incoming Director of Curriculum and Assessment. He's most recently served as the principal at Fergus High School in Lewiston, Montana. He began his career in education in 1998, and as an instructional assistant in Reddington, New Jersey, and has served as a special education teacher, track and field coach, vice principal, and chief executive officer superintendent. He has a bachelor's degree in social science from Charleston Southern University, a graduate degree from Rider University, and a master's degree in curriculum instruction and supervision from Rider University as well. So when he joins us in Arizona, here in Mesa, we will get a picture, Tim Hacker, and we will bring him in to introduce him to our governing board as well. I know that he extends his gratitude and appreciation for joining our amazing school district. So congratulations to everybody. We are going to continue on with our meeting. If you want to celebrate elsewhere, that's okay with us. We are going to continue on, and I want to say thank you to all the family and friends for supporting our brand-new leaders. Thank you so much.
Wow, that was amazing. Our next item on the agenda is for board approval of the District Administrator Evaluation System, which will become effective, well, it was, it will become effective immediately because the effective date is April 1. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Mrs. Sears seconds.
Ms. Ellingson moved, and Mrs. Sears second. Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Sears votes yea.
With a 5-0 vote, we have approved the District Administrator Evaluation System. At this time, I'd certainly like to thank Mr. Wing for all of his efforts, but certainly all of the members of the design team that put this forth for us. The evaluation is thorough, it's going to be effective, and I really appreciate that you brought so many folks together to make sure that it was so, and appreciate all of their efforts. Would you like to make any comments, Mr. Wing?
No, I second that. I wanted to thank the design team members. Have a large, inclusive list, and they spent a lot of time researching nationwide evaluation instruments, the PSL standards and other standards as well. So thank you, design team. More to come, by the way.
Okay, thanks for the warning. All right. And at the next part of our agenda is the certified hourly rates. And we have a recommendation to approve the certified hourly rates, which will become effective on May 30, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ellingson has seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, we have a request to speak on this issue, and that would come from Ms. Kelly And Ms. Berg, you have three minutes, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Full disclosure, I had several hours of dental work today, and I'm going to blame that as to why I don't have matching shoes on. So.
Well, but you know that Dr. Mallorwine would think that that's part of the outfit.
It could be. I mean, kids mismatch their socks, so I mean...
They say confession's good for the soul.
That's right. Madam President, board members, and superintendency, as you are getting ready to vote on this, I just wanted to say thank you for considering it. The hourly rate has not changed for quite some time. It did not get that 20 by 2020 bump. And as one of the principals for the district-wide summer school, I don't ever remember it changing. So there's a couple of key points. One, that it's now connected to, or will be connected hopefully, to the beginning teacher salary. So as that raises, the hourly rate will raise. The curriculum rate will now be tied to the sub-rate, so as that changes, instead of having $16 an hour for curriculum rate, it'll now be 25. So it's not just above working at McDonald's, so I know our teachers will appreciate it. The next point is also, thank you for making this effective May 30, if you vote yes. So it is important that the teachers see this reflection coming this summer. Reading specialist teachers are the teachers that haven't been making beginning salary rates, and so it's going to affect them as well, not just summer school teachers and those who do curriculum work. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate it, and thanks to the Meet and Confer team, and Mr. Wing, and all of us just getting together, and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you and connect those points. And now watch my different shoes, one's brown, one's black.
I just want to say that this is the type of opportunity that we, as a board, welcome and are really mindful to consider these things, and really appreciate the input and the speaking up of those who work for us, and we appreciate the opportunity to consider these things. And when we are able to do such things as we vote tonight, it really warms our heart because we do care about our employees and their concerns and what things we need to do to improve our district, that we know it all starts with people.
Thank you, Ms. Sears. Anyone else? Well, I would just like to echo Ms. Berg's comment that it's about time, because I've been retired 16 years, and I was paid 16.27 an hour to do curriculum work back in the Pleistocene era. So, you know, that's an insult to the profession and to our certified employees, and so it is about time, and I'm glad I'm on the board to do it. This is amazing. So seeing that there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. With a 5-0 vote, we have passed the new hourly effective rates. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all of the items listed are considered as a group except for letter H, which has been pulled and will be a part of the action item agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Do I have a second? Ms. Ellingson has seconded. I call for the vote. With a 5-0 vote, the board has approved the consent agenda. Dr. Forless, is there any comment that you would like to make at this time?
I'd just like to say thank you to the board. You have approved materials for instruction and for much-needed items so that we can continue educating kids. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we will go to action items, and Action Item 7A was the former 6H, and that is to recommend the approval of a contract award for a new scoreboard for Mountain View High School. Do I have a motion? Ms. Ellingson has moved. A second?
Mrs. Sears second.
Mrs. Sears second. Discussion? So we do have a request to address the board, and it is Mr. Wayne Syrick. Thank you, Mr. Syrick, for joining us tonight, and you are on to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the school board and Mesa Schools Administration. My name is Wayne Syrick, small business owner in Mesa and a proud graduate of Mesa High, or, excuse me, Mountain View High School. So proud that my first... So proud that my first five children have also graduated from Mountain View High School and have two more to go, including a freshman at Mountain View right now. Also serve as a volunteer president of the Toro Football Booster Club, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization for our football team, and also live in the Mountain View community. I love Mesa Schools, and I love Mountain View High School. I'm here tonight to urge your support and speak about a public-private partnership on your agenda between our community and also Mountain View High School, and mainly a local corporation, Empire Caterpillar Machinery. This particular project represents a two-year effort by our community and business owners like myself, but mainly our principal, Dr. Mike Oliver, and Empire Machinery, who have agreed to be the initial corporate sponsor of this new scoreboard, Jumbotron scoreboard, in exchange for providing an innovative internship on our campus for our students to intern for Empire Machinery, which will fill a major job need for Empire Machinery in a tough labor market, but also provides a huge benefit to our students, who will learn valuable job skills and will help better prepare them to enter the workplace after high school with high-paying diesel mechanic jobs and other jobs from Empire Machinery. There are obvious benefits to our athletic programs for this type of scoreboard, including our football program in the form of promotion of our student athletes and also revenue streams for our school, but this asset will also be used for regional track meets and other athletic regional tournaments, other athletic events, community events, movie nights, graduation band competitions, dance competitions, major educational opportunities for our students where they can learn real-life skills in the form of photography, marketing, graphic design, and computer classes, which will immediately benefit them after high school, all benefiting Mesa Schools by immediately owning this asset with no net loss to our taxpayers. But this really isn't about a football program. This really isn't about a Jumbotron either. This is about a community partnership in an innovative way and outside-the-box thinking to engage our local businesses and communities to be a part of our campuses. Imagine the Boeing Science Center of Engineering at Red Mountain High School, or the Banner Nursing Center at Dobson High School. These are projects that not only will set Mesa Public Schools apart from other districts, but will provide next-gen benefits for our students. So thank you for consideration of this great project, and be proud to work with Dr. Oliver on this project, also a proud sponsor and donor of this project. This will send a message to our neighboring community and charter school community with outside-the-box thinking that this is...
Discussion by the board. Dr. O'Reilly?
First, I want to say I'm grateful for the community's generous support of Mountain View High School. In fact, as our last speaker's personal contribution to this, I very much appreciate that. I also appreciate Dr. Oliver is passionate about supersizing his current scoreboard and replacing it with a state-of-the-art Jumbotron. He certainly has put effort into gathering community support, and I think it is, you are, as you said, the first high school to do this. My concern here is we were told that there would be no district funds directed toward the expenses associated with upgrading the scoreboards, and what was in our materials wasn't exactly clear. As you pointed out, and Dr. Oliver points out, a scoreboard can serve many purposes, but they're not included in the budget of our high school remodels, nor are they considered essential capital improvement. And as we all know, the district has many pressing priorities, and we're about to, probably we're going to hear about going out for a bond and override, and selling that to our community. If individual school booster clubs, community donors, senior classes choose to invest in Jempertrons, that's their prerogative, but no district funds would be used for costs associated with getting a bigger scoreboard. That's what we were promised and told. Yet tonight, the board's being asked to approve an expenditure of $288,362 with primary funding from the district school plant fund. So if this was made with money that already existed, I think it would, if it came from the district at all, it would become from some sort of grant funding or a school, something that would take that donation funding. We have repeatedly stressed the importance of transparency in financial matters, so I'm having trouble figuring this all out. So the cover page says the school has received multi-year donations to pay for this system. In my mind, they've received the money, not the commitment for money. It says it has received multi-year donations, but that's not what we see in the supporting documentation. The cover page goes on to say that the school plant fund will only be used to pay for the upfront installation of the display, and this fund will be reimbursed as the money is received. So my question is, has it already been received as stated or not? And when I talked to Dr. Forless, she was adamant that this transaction doesn't involve a loan of district funds. So maybe loan's not the correct term, but this document clearly states the fund will be reimbursed as the funds are raised. So here's my view and my concern with this. I'm grateful and appreciative of the overwhelming support the Mountain View community has provided, and I think the school donors should have the freedom to choose, purchase special items for the school. But I'm opposed to the recommendation that we use district funds for the expenses associated with purchasing a Jumbotron for an individual high school, when it was previously said to us, no district funds will be used on this expense. And what we're being asked to do is approve district funds, the student, the school plant fund, to pay for this. That is what we are being asked to do, and it's clear that that money will be coming in over five years. Money isn't here right now. And so I don't think installing a new scoreboard constitutes an emergency requiring a loan of district funds. So that is my concern with this. So further, a new school, a new scoreboard is, I know it's something Mountain View really wants, but as board members, we're responsible to the whole district, and this purchase needs to be considered in that context. We have a lot of other, more pressing district priorities, like reliable air conditioning for every classroom. And if we have money in a school plant fund, if that can be used for those priorities, I think that's where it should be used, because that is one of our priorities. And it will help us as we go out to the public saying we're using our money in the best way possible. So as a school district, I don't think we should be using our limited funds for upgrading scoreboards, and we shouldn't be making loans. So as soon as the costs are covered by donations, I have no problem with supporting the purchase, but I can't agree with the superintendent's recommendation tonight to use district funds to buy now and get paid later. That is my concern, not Mountain View, not the scoreboard, but the way we are funding this. So that's my comment about this.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. Any other board comments at this time? Ms. Ellingson?
I'm just actually really curious about the plant fund and what that typically comes from. Also, I see partnership agreements on here from Empire Cat and Mr. Syrick saying that it will be paid back, also wanting to know if all of the high schools had this opportunity or any school. Let's say they work something out with a community partner. I would just like to hear some of that.
Madam President, Member Ellingson, I can address some of that, and then I think as far as, I think we have some folks in the audience might be able to better address how this was presented to the schools. My understanding is it was presented to all the high schools, but I wasn't present for that conversation. Dr. O'Reilly has, I think, appropriately outlaid the way this is to occur. This is a bit unprecedented in the concept that we would outlay the cash to put in this display, and then through corporate donations and local partnerships, we would have that money paid back. It's a bit of a chicken-and-the-egg semantics when you get into, somebody doesn't want to pay for something that doesn't exist yet, and they don't have, you know, $250,000 to give us today. The school plant fund that you've asked about is a fund that primarily, it receives several different areas of revenue, but I think the one I would highlight the most is cell towers. That's where the leasing of our properties to cellphone companies, that revenue tends to go into that fund. The reason for the use of that fund is, one, it's replenished by cell tower revenue. So even as we spend from that fund, we see revenue coming back into the fund. We have historically used it in particularly ways that address when we have funding restrictions, when it comes to school plant items. What I mean by that is, when we look at our bond funds, for example, we can't address any administrative needs with our bond funds, because they're restricted to the schools, because we didn't ask the voters specifically for any administrative costs to be included in the bonds. So those implies that those monies are direct to the schools. So how we've used, an example that I would use of a recent expenditure of school plant funds would be the warehouse air conditioning system and the replacement of the roof at the warehouse. We have millions of dollars of inventory there that was becoming in jeopardy, both due to heat and due to the failure of the roof, and that is not something I have ready access to funds to address. So that's typically how the school plant fund, I mean, it's been used for many different things over the years, but in my mind, it works best when it's working for us in areas where we have restricted funds that can't address those capital needs. And so in that sense, these dollars aren't currently committed. Could they be committed to HVAC, other projects, certainly, but we also have to weigh that against making sure that revenue's received and collected. The current balance in that fund is around $8 million at this time. That's down several million from a few years ago, as we've been spending it on several different projects throughout the district.
It's so unanswerable for me, just how it all went down. I'm under the impression that the six comprehensive high school principals were brought together and were told that, hey, this is a plan you can all take advantage of. Anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Ellingson. Madam President, members of the governing board, I'll explain to you from my perspective since I was here from the beginning. One of the things that has become a concern in Mesa Public Schools is competition for students. With that is kind of the new era of public education, where we, with the open enrollment laws and the different aspects of how students choose schools now, we have to be competitive in all aspects. One of the things we did when we hired District Athletic Director Tommy Eubanks is we talked about how do we become competitive? We have watched students leave our school district to go to other schools and play and participate in all kinds of different activities. I was in South Gilbert when ALA came in and took 200 kids from Williamsfield, and I can see the impact on this. Every aspect of our job in Mesa Public Schools, my passion is to be the best that we can and provide the best environment and the most inclusive school. Our high schools are the pillars of this community. We have charter schools that have moved into our area that have been able to, quite honestly, attract some of our elementary schools, but our high schools hold our population, and we need to look into the future and build the schools of the future now, when we can. So we want to look for opportunities to generate additional money that doesn't come out of, from taxpayers, to really build better and more enticing facilities and things that attract students. So one of the many things that we looked at was these video display boards that a lot of schools have in the area. Williamsfield has one, that's how I became very familiar with it, and we had, with a funding model where there was X amount of money that it would cost, and at the time, it was just over a couple hundred thousand dollars, which, seven years ago. And so they went out and they got five donors to pay X amount of money over five years, and then the district out of the plant site fund would produce the money, and then the money would be paid back, and it was a zero-sum game, and then they would have something that would attract talent. I know when I left there, there was over 40 athletes that were on open enrollment at Williamsfield High School, so it did a little bit of that. So this was how we ended up down this path and thought, okay, what can we do to bring something like this to Mesa Public Schools? So Athletic Director Tommy Eubanks reached out to Daktronics, which is one of the main competitors, vendors in the area, and they went out and scheduled, I believe, four different meetings. All the high schools were there, and they produce marketing materials and a plan for every high school customized, so the high school leaders, it could be your athletic director, your principal, whoever, to go out and connect with community members and basically try to get sponsors and donors to bring these video display boards to our campuses. It's not, it sits on the football field. The perception is it's just for football, but it's not. It's like, we build a relationship with Arizona Special Olympics. We want to host Paralympic and Special Olympic events at our schools. We have beautiful turf fields where we do our tracks. We have big facilities. A video display board would be one more thing that we'd be able to utilize to attract people to come to our schools. And some of the other things that Mr. Syrick shared with us, but every school was given the exact same plan and the exact same opportunity. It was exposure to the different type of display boards that were available, some exposure to the type of sound systems that would go in there, and then what is the plan to attract donors and sponsors to be apart from the community to help fund this? So again, our taxpayer money that comes in is not used to go out. And so what basically occurred from there was Dr. Oliver and his pursuit of, you know, I think we all know his passion is to make Mountain View the best possible school and to embrace his community that he can, and he went out and really connected with the community and raised this money. And so at the end of the day, every single school was given the exact same opportunity at the exact same time. Now, I would share with you, we've had administrator turnover at Red Mountain, so the new principal there is just getting caught up to speed, so he is going to, you know, he has the opportunity and the knowledge now as well. We have a new principal at Skyline, so now that is going to invigorate that school to see what their next steps are. My feeling is that we have to, it's the first innovation that kind of opens up the possibility for more innovation. So the opportunity to get this and have this as the first one, I believe, will help us get these in other places. Scott Thompson and I had long conversations about what does it mean to have equitable facilities? And it's, we want to set a baseline of our facilities at our high school to make our high schools the best in the East Valley, and we are doing that. We are doing that with our bond dollars, and we're doing that very intentionally and strategically. This extra stuff, like a video display board or other things that we've talked about ideas, is something that we need to build relationships with our community, engage our boosters, and we want each community to have a little bit of autonomy in what they want to bring to their school. The Mountain View community is very passionate about Mountain View, and it's taken Dr. Oliver two years to raise the money, but I think this will stand as a... But I think this will stand as a, as a piece of pride, a piece of engagement for the community. But it also will stand as our first innovation effort. So we can innovate different things at different schools depending on the will and the want of the community. So everybody was given the exact same opportunity. I think I, I shared, I think in Dr. Forrest's status, even the mockup of the Red Mountain draft, where it was customized for Red Mountain. Every school's had it customized so they could go out, Banner Health or any other, any other, you know, Boeing or whoever's in their community and say, hey, how would you like to be a part of this? Just Dr. Oliver is kind of first dancer for, so to speak. He's gone out there, he's, he's had some fortitude to build this. But everybody's been given the same, same opportunity, but it always takes the first one. And then the path is easier for the others. So a little more of an answer than I'm sure you wanted, but I, I just felt, I wanted to share with you kind of a little bit of the why behind how we got here.
Oh, I really appreciate that. And Dr. O'Reilly, I do understand that you have some hesitation with tying up some money in the plant fund. My, my heartburn is over. We've built this amazing community partnership with Empire Cat. And I feel like if our board is going to start turning things like this down, it might prevent future partnerships. So I feel like that's what we have to weigh. That's kind of what I've been weighing in my head and heart as I've been thinking about this the last couple of days. And seeing their partnership agreements and, and knowing that. And it sounds like if other schools, I would hope that even other schools other than just our high schools, that they wanted to present these type of grants or just loans, I guess we would say, to build some innovation. And I would welcome and hope for many more community partnerships. So to me, that's kind of what we're weighing. And it feels like our high schools were presented this opportunity without knowing that maybe it could get shot down by the board. I don't, I don't even know if that was on their minds. And so Dr. Oliver went out and got all the funds, thinking he was doing it all the right way and thinking it was coming. And so anyway, I, I understand your heartburn on the issue of a big loan like that. But I also don't want to burn bridges with community partners, so.
I, I do feel like it was presented to the board that this funding was in place. And having a school be a debtor to, to the board is, is not a model that I think we should be, we should be setting for our other schools. Because even when Dr. O'Reilly started speaking, when I was looking at the documents, I thought, okay, they, this is great. They've got community money. There's no district spending. We do have schools that, that need HVAC systems. And there's a couple I've brought up that I've been told they're not bad enough to be replaced yet, even though they're pretty bad. So we've got extra cash. We do have other needs. And our, our biggest priority is in attracting students is the academic achievement of our, of our students. They have a scoreboard, right? But I mean, and I, I totally appreciate what you said, Mrs. Ellingson. I love the Empire Cat partnership. And we're now really like putting this bind where we, do we burn bridges with them? Do we, like, for Dr. Oliver, is he gonna have to like eat crow and he has to go talk to other people about it now? Everybody's in this bind. I don't think this was a good place to be. I'd like to not see this in the future. But I, I was under the impression that this money was there from the donors already.
Mrs. Sears.
So if I look at this right, I know it was like $288,000. And I've been playing with numbers and figuring it out. With, you know, I did a rough estimate, $250,000. So it would be times six schools, that's $1.5 million aside. The part that I'm negotiating in my mind is revenue coming in, right? And with the causes. And that part I know maybe is a question mark, but I couldn't like settle on, okay, if the boards are, have a projection of $40,000, then this what it actually means. And if we were doing a loan, what the loan looks like and all of those things. And I would prefer, and that's probably a bad word, the loan. But I don't understand what the offset is. Like if we're buying the board upfront or we're buying the board over five years?
The district would pay for the installation and the cost of the board itself upfront. And then the donations from the corporate entities would reimburse the fund that, that as, that is paying for it. So school plant would upfront the 280-plus thousand dollars. And then that would be paid back over time through the donation commitments from, some of the funds have already been received, some of them are donated, have donation commitments over a five-year period. So the, the, part of the strategy of using the, the school plant was to, I, I understand very well the, the conversation around the priorities of our capital needs. And we've been expending bond dollars and Esser dollars and capital dollars with, to address many of the needs throughout the district to address specifically HVAC units. The reason, again, that the, the plant fund, that I'm looking at the plant fund is, is it is a, a fund that we don't typically dedicate to those large projects until we have enough money collected. And that is a fund that is also continually getting refreshed and, and adding revenue to it as we collect the leases on the cellphone towers. So because it's being replenished, in my mind, it's not diverting funds because as we're expending, new cash is coming in to replenish the cash that's going out. But that's just my personal thought as how I looked at this when they brought this concept forward to me. And I can't disagree that this is, as Dr. O'Reilly has said, this is cash upfront. And then the donations coming in after the fact. And apologize if we didn't make that clear. We've tried to provide that information and explanation. But we're also trying to indicate there's no long-term taxpayer commitment to these dollars. Cellphone revenue is not taxed. So it's another kind of caveat to this. And we're not using taxpayer-funded, created dollars in any way. We're not diverting from any projects that we're doing. And I think the statement to say that there was no district output for this display was to say, when you take the totality of the commitment, the display has been paid for. The issue we're talking about here is the up-fronting of the cost and the paying back of those dollars. And, and that's, that's basically where, where the conversation's at.
Specific, Mrs. Sears, there's $63,000 that have been received in donations and gifts that are already in the Mountain View account to start the purchase of this.
Dr. O'Reilly.
First, Dr. Mallorine, was there any other, you said that the, the display company had these people, here's how you go out and raise money. Were there any financing options? Were there ways for schools to finance it other than the district? So did they, you know, you go to a car dealership, they offer you financing? It was, is there any financing of the displays that, that was possible? Well, I don't believe so. When we, when we talked about it, the way that in my, in my experience, it's always been done, it's been done this way. So we, we went out and tried to replicate what other schools, other school districts had done. So when, and when we thought about financing, you know, usually attached that some kind of interest rate. So we, we looked at a different option. So I don't believe there was another option. We really just looked at the way that other places had done it and thought this would be our, our path.
And Scott, the public content is what kind of also threw me off. No district funds will be used to purchase the display. And that's, and the school plant fund will be used to pay for the upfront installation, only the upfront installation of the display. So that sounded to me like Mountain View was paying, that was all paid for. The district was not paying for any of that. So, and what we're asked to vote on tonight is $288,327, $362.37 from the, the plant fund. So that is just the cost of the display, correct?
That's correct. That and the installation.
Where's the installation?
That's the cost of the display and the installation of that display.
Because we had some document, some documentation that came with this that said installation was another $99,000.
There are some additional costs to, and there's been some marrying of some projects to accomplish the final product. Those projects will be going forward regardless of that. One of the commitments was to a sound system at the stadium that was made before this display conversation came into being. And so the sound system now becomes part of the installation of the, of the display because it's all tied together. And there was also an issue of some play clocks that need to have power. So regardless of your vote this evening, those two projects will be going forward on the campus because they need a new sound system and power needs to be established to run the play clocks. And those two projects are now going to play into helping achieve the final product of having this display if you so choose to approve it.
So what may be confusing is, looking at the documentation we got, the estimates, the, the play clocks and the, and the sound system was above and beyond it appeared, the installation. So it looked like there are 288, 362 for the display board, 90,000 for installation. Then you go into the, the sound and the, the play clocks. So that's why I'm saying I was confused by this. Because the numbers didn't add up to me that, okay, if we're just doing installation, are we just doing the display? So I was very confused as I read this. And in addition to not being in favor of being the, the group that's providing essentially a loan or whatever you want, fronting up, up-fronting the money and then getting paid back over five years. I, I still have concerns about that, but understand that's why it's confusing. Because this wasn't, I don't think, laid out as clearly as it could have been.
I think what we were trying to get to was the totality of the project cost. If you just talk, the, the contract that you're approving this evening or considering is just the contract for the display and the installation of the display. But to achieve everything that needs to happen for the entire system to be successful, there are other pieces and parts. So we were trying to bring together, here's all the donation parts. Here's some work that was going to be done on the campus. Anyway, if you marry all those projects together in totality, you have a larger project, but it is all funded and, and would be completed in that way. Again, this is a little unprecedented for us too. So we're trying to explain it in a way that says, you know, we're not, what we're trying to be clear about is there's no taxpayer dollars being committed to this project. So I think that's why we're trying to emphasize that it is, we have a commitment for the funding. But we're also trying to be transparent that this is over five years. We don't have all the money in right now. And that's why the school plant fund is upfront paying for this. And that's why that's on the agenda that way.
And so it's.
Could we do it better? I, I don't disagree, but this is our first time and we're, we're trying to walk through it.
So, so there won't be any more money for installation needed. So that 99,000 isn't going to happen. That's not going to be on top of this.
No, everything you've presented is.
Buy it, just buy it, get installation free.
Everything you've been presenting has all the costs associated with the entire project.
I think part of the problem is we've got the, the letter from the high school, but we don't have a detail that lays out what the, what this will be in, in that detail.
I have, I, I certainly appreciate what my colleagues have said. And Dr. O'Reilly, I, I appreciate your concerns. I also, Ms. Ellingson's concern about partnerships in the, in the community and furthering those partnerships. And I know that partnerships are now the way of the world when it's, when it comes to public education. And certainly that guy down the street, Dr. Crowe, has shown us how to do it. And, and I, it's maybe not the way that we're used to doing business, but it may be the way of the future. I, I appreciate, Dr. Mallorine, when you said that every community had the opportunity. However, does every community have the ability? And I wonder, I wonder if some of the principals didn't bite because they knew their community couldn't come up with this kind of money. And that, that concerns me. That we give, we give our various campuses opportunity, but do they all have the ability? And, and I guess that's where, where I'm, I'm conflicted. I, I see it as a great community builder. I see it as a way to enhance that, all that money that we spent on, on the renovations of the fields. And, and those were, those were great moments in the community. I saw the community come together. I saw the tears shed as old players came back and coaches came back. And, and maybe even fields were named for coaches. There's, there is that sense of belonging. And, and that's where I'm torn between what my colleagues are saying here. So I wish I could ask maybe another principal why they didn't go out like, like Dr. Oliver did. We, we know that he, he's learned this community. And certainly we have Mr. Syrick here who is, who is committed not only financially, but he's committed his family to this community. And we have to appreciate that. So I don't know if I've introduced more questions than I've answered here. But I, I can understand the, the conflict. It's not that I, that we don't want the best for Mountain View High School. That, that, that should never, ever be in doubt from this board. We want what's best for every community. But as you can see, the board is conflicted on this.
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Sears.
I like all have considered this. And after this lengthy discussion, I understand the questions, what's going back and forth. I would like to make a motion to postpone this to a later time and a certain time. So I'm thinking maybe our May meeting, I don't know if we vote on when that time is. But based on the nature of what's going on in this conversation, I don't think this is where we make a decision based on, you know, asking. We don't know if there's, is another financing option. We didn't know about this or that. I would rather not actually have a situation where we just kind of jeopardize and hope and, you know, and then someone like, well, if I knew this before. I just feel like there's some, a few loopholes that have not been tied up in what's going on. And because I understand there's, there's tremendous community support, partner support. And I think we need to iron this out before we try to do, like, you know, rip ourselves apart. We're trying to do this right now with the if and, and then find out two weeks from now, something different than we know right now. And that's my motion. So if I need to restate it, I will.
What you have, what you have done is you want to postpone this vote. And would you like to name a certain time? Would you like to name the next meeting or the first meeting in May? What would you, what would you prefer? Because you do have to say.
Yes. So I would say the first meeting in May. I think we are on the first meeting of April. So that'll give us the next, not the next voting, but the next one. Given staff and all of us time and we'll have additional updates and all of that. I don't know if there's a time clock with.
Before she makes an amendment, can I say something to the current discussion?
She has made a motion, Mrs. Sears has made a motion to postpone the vote on this particular action item to May 9. She has made a motion, Mrs. Sears has made a motion to postpone the vote on this particular action item to May 9th. We have to have a second before we can start discussing.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to postpone this vote. And we can debate the postponing of the vote.
Talk about what we were talking about before. I just wanted to say something to what you said.
If it applies.
I think as a, as a mother, I, I have never held back one of my children because they were great at something and my other three weren't. So I, I'm not saying that that is how our high schools are. I'm just saying like, I don't feel like we should punish Mountain View or hold them back just because at this point, our other high schools have had the opportunity, may not have the ability. I, I also think that we can give our highs, we can help enhance our high schools with the ability to go after this and link them up with community partners. So I don't feel like that should even be on the table.
Okay, all right. So do we have any more discussion on the motion to postpone to the May 9th meeting?
May I share something?
Ms. Williams.
May I call on Mr. Eubanks to speak? There's a pertinent thing you might want to know before you vote on that.
Okay, Mr. Eubanks, would you please come to the podium and help us?
Yeah, sure. Just as you're considering that the quote does end on private, so the pricing will jump substantially and might however will be sent back to find more donors to come back to the board. So you're aware, which has happened to him throughout the last year and a half as he's been doing this, getting money, getting close, but missing the quote has everything. As we know, inflation has skyrocketed ahead. He's had to go back and find more donors to continue that.
There was a question about refinancing and that was not an option. It was asked about Delectronics if we can finance through them to purchase a board. And the answer was no. As far as one school having it and not, so you're aware in other districts, Williamsfield has it, Higley does not. Centennial High School in Peoria does, they're the only ones. So Warro's the only one in the Scottsdale District. Where else exists Yuma? High School's the only one in the Yuma District. So it, this may be different, but I agree, you know, I, I know that Empire Cat is very much looking forward to having their logo underneath this board and display it proudly. And, and went above and beyond in their donation so that they were the only logo underneath that board. So I know this is a point of pride for them in moving forward. So yes, this is odd, but we are setting a precedent as more of donations come in. What does it look like? Schools want to go above and beyond and do unique things so that we can attract from local Southeast schools that do have things like this. Like Williamsfield just spent, I think, four and a half million dollars on their weight room and field house for, for their school. So there's, there's going to be opportunities like this as our focus looks at facilities and improvements. As we are an aging school district, we're going to have to make these types of improvements moving forward. When these schools were built, it was not in a day and age where there was Twitter, where high schools are showing the custom wood lockers all throughout their campus or the meeting room that's just for athletics or shared by other activities. So I, I, my only hesitation in denying it is the work that Mr. Oliver's done for the last two years, thinking he was doing it correctly in the right way. More likely than not, if it is delayed, then it, it will go away permanently. So I'm open to any questions that you have about that, but I wanted to share that before you do vote on it.
And appreciate you giving us the timeliness of, of our vote. Thank you very much. Board members, are we ready to vote on the postponement?
Am I able to ask a question? I know, is this public comment or is this district comment?
We've asked, we've asked him, I've asked him to come up and speak.
Okay. So what happens if some of these commitments fall through? If they say that they're going to, to pay the money and it falls through them, then what happens? Is the, is the, maybe this is a question for Mrs. King. Is the district going to sue them? Or do we just say, well, now we don't have the money?
Keep the discussion to the, to the postponement.
Pertinent to the postponement, okay. My apologies, I can, I can talk to you later on that one.
Okay, so.
Disregard that.
All right.
I don't know that I would have had the answer anyway, so.
Okay, discussion on the postponement. Seeing that there's no further discussion, can we please have a vote on, call for the vote on the postponement of this vote until May 9th?
Mrs. Sears votes in the affirmative.
With a vote of three a and two nay, the motion carries. The vote will be postponed until the May 9th meeting. The next item on our agenda is 7B, which is the recommendation of the execution of the necessary documents to close the transaction for a real estate donation agreement for a strip of land at the southern boundary of Webster Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Walden has moved. Is there a second?
Mrs. Sears second.
Mrs. Sears second. Is there any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears votes in the affirmative.
With a five zero vote, we have unanimously accepted the transaction for the real estate donation. Mrs. Walden.
I just wanted to thank the district for working with the city council for this, this agreement that saves the district money. And I'm, I'm sure a lot of work went into it that we didn't get to see, so thank you so much for that.
Yes, big thanks to the city of Mesa.
Okay, let's go to our next item on the agenda, which is the proclamation of public. Wait a minute, I want to get this right, sorry. It is the proclamation on bus driver appreciation week. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing April 17th through the 21st, 2023 as bus driver appreciation week?
So moved.
I second.
Mrs. Sears has moved, Ms. Ellingson seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just that we love our bus drivers.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears votes in the affirmative.
With a five zero vote, we have unanimously proclaimed April 17th through the 21st as bus driver appreciation week. And we have a proclamation which will now be read by Dr. O'Reilly, the clerk of the board.
Whereas each year Mesa Public Schools' bus drivers transport more than 14,429 students between home and school safely. And whereas each school, school, each year, 529 school buses driven by dedicated drivers travel more than 4,490,475 miles. And whereas without school buses and school bus drivers, many students would not have safe, reliable transportation to and from school. And whereas this responsibility is great in comparison to the available compensation. And whereas Mesa Public Schools believes it's important to salute and appreciate school bus drivers and recognize the invaluable contributions they make to education and safety. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim April 17th through 21, school bus driver appreciation week. We encourage everyone to join us in celebrating the contributions of our bus drivers, aides, and all the transportation staff.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly, and, and thanks to our bus drivers. My, my idea of pure terror is 60 kids with my back to them while driving a 36,000 pound vehicle. What they do every day to make sure that our kids get to school safely, making it possible for them to learn is amazing. And I know that we'll be celebrating at the various locations tomorrow. And, and we do love our bus drivers and we thank them from the bottoms of our hearts, that's for sure. Let's go to our next proclamation, which is the proclamation on public school volunteer week. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing April 17th through the 21st as public school volunteer week? Ms. Ellingson has moved.
I second.
And Dr. O'Reilly has seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote.
I vote in the affirmative, Ms. Sears.
With a vote of five yea, zero nay, we have unanimously proclaimed April 17th through 21 as public school volunteer week. Dr. O'Reilly, would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation. Whereas parent and community involvement is a significant factor in the quality of our schools and the success of our students. And whereas we appreciate the dedicated volunteers who help teachers, administrators, and support staff in countless ways. And whereas volunteers reflect the highest values of our democratic society by representing people of all ages and all walks of life. And whereas volunteers reap the rich rewards that come from helping others. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim April 17th through 21, public school volunteer week. We encourage everyone to join us in celebrating the vital work of our volunteers.
Thank you very much. And certainly all of us who are, who visit our schools, we so appreciate the volunteers in this community. Whether it's the Washington parents who put together a yearbook for their students or the Longfellow parents who put on an amazing celebration last year for their anniversary, or the Shepherd students who tran, Shepherd parents, excuse me, that transform a stage into a musical. It, thank you so much for all the volunteers. Mesa Public Schools is very, very grateful for the volunteerism of this community. Ms., Dr. Forrester, do you have anything to add?
We are very grateful for all of our partners, including our volunteers who make our schools better. Thank you, President Hutchinson.
Let's go to the next agenda item, which is the second hearing on the 24, 25, 25, 26 school year calendars. It is now at the point where we would need approval from the board at the second hearing. The first hearing was the last board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the school calendars?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Do we have a second?
I second.
Mrs. Ellingson has seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would like to move forward with the superintendent's recommendation for the current school calendar. I received many memos via email, text, and in person this week, our last two weeks. And every parent that came to me and even a couple of teachers said, no, we want to stay with what we have. So that's what I heard most of. So that went in line with what our survey data said.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears votes in affirmative.
With a vote of five yea, zero nay, we have approved the 24, 25, 25, 26 school calendars. The next item on the agenda is our discussion items, and there are three of these. The first item is item 10A, which is the 23, 24 compensation plan. I want to remind the board to limit the conversation to the compensation plan, which we have discussed in executive session, but please make sure that we only refer to the discussion as it exists right now that we can have in this board meeting. And I'm going to ask Mr. Justin Wing, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hutchinson, governing board, super tenancy audience. I think we have a slideshow to share. Thank you. Just give you a quick update. We have four separate meet and confer teams. We have a certified or MEA meet confer team. We have a administrator, otherwise known as MASA, meet confer team. We have a classified hourly, MESA, meet confer team, and a classified exempt, MAX, meet confer team. We have met quite often, I would say, since October, let's just say October. And we prioritize this year based on our staffing contract timelines to address issues or matters that may have a cost associated to that. That way we can get it to the governing board. So we're not necessarily complete in our meet confer efforts. We're completed with recommendations we intend to bring next governing board meeting. We are working on various non-cost working condition type of, of issues as we speak. So to provide an update, the MEA meet confer team has landed on a recommendation of a 2% salary increase with us adjusting the starting salaries of certified positions to 1%. Just enough why if that were to be approved, our certified hourly rates will change. Hence the alignment of the, that starting salary. Increased certified hourly rates, and we're thankful for the governing board's approval tonight on those. Provided performance are stipend, some we don't currently provide. We intend to bring to you as a recommendation. And then also a stipend for those who, speech, language, excuse me, speech and language pathologists who possess a valid certificate of clinical competence. I'm so used to calling it the CCCs, national certification, providing a stipend to them. MASA similarly, and you'll notice a trend, 2% increase with the increase in the starting salaries by 1%. This is ensuring that the individual completing their first year going on to their second year has, is not compressed with the new hires coming in next year. Hence the difference of the 2% versus the starting salary adjustment. We are also looking at changing our success school principal pay grade to align with our elementary principal pay grade. It's about a $7,000 difference. MESA, our hourly staff, 2% increase, 1% starting salary. Looking at increasing the work calendar for our elementary and junior high secretaries. And also provide a temporary change in the minimum resource center aid allocation. Aligned with that would be an establishment of a design team that looks, does a deep dive in our resource center. Because as we met in meet confer, a lot of rocks were turned. And we just felt comfortable that we needed to dig deeper into that and ultimately have the design team make a recommendation prior to winter break. And then the MAX team, probably the smallest of our teams, nine to 10,000 employees. They represent, I think, a little over 100 of them. These are the classified exempt. They recommended a 2% salary increase and then an increase of starting salary by 1%. I was asked to provide some information of what impact a 2% would have to all four employee groups. What I shared with you is a point in time on the total full-time equivalency, FTE. That does not necessarily mean employees. This includes vacancies. A job share, for example, would be a 1.0, but there's two individuals, for lack of better terms, two bodies sharing that one job. So we do things in the full-time equivalency. If we gave a 2% increase, it would cost all funds for MEA, for example, 5. almost $4 million, which is equivalent to almost 60% of our total budget for raises. I also broke down the M and O funds. That MEA 2% raise would be 4.0, close to 4.5 million dollars or 62.33%. They are our largest staff. They represent on a 2% increase, the most expenditure to that. that. And then I walked it down, MESA, MASA, and MAX. You'll see MAX has, again, the lowest population of our staff, hence the lowest amount that it costs all funds, and then the MNO funds. What does it do per employee group as far as the average? The average MEA certified employee would receive a little over $1,300, MESA $0.42 per hour, MASA about $2,200, and MAX a little over $1,500. This is not applicable, this is only representing those who are funded out of MNO, so vacancies would not be included in this average. Vacancies would only increase by 1% because we're adjusting for the starting salary. Then I was asked to share teacher years of experience in MPS. Our first-year teacher, through the governing board approval, last fall, we increased the starting salary to $53,500. A 2% raise is, means $1,070 to that individual, that would bump his or her salary to 54,570. Remember the 53,500 for the big, for the starting salary, would only go up 1%, or $535. So it'll, it'll break that 54 digit, 54,505, I believe. I pulled a fifth-year teacher, all years within MPS, so that individual would earn 55,999, 2% raise, 1120. As you can see, the greater your years in MPS, the higher your salary is, 2% raise, and what the value would be of that 2% raise, and then the projected salary in each of those scenarios. And with that, discussion, President Hutchinson.
Okay. At this time, board members, if you have questions, discussion, whatever you would like at this point, anyone?
Is there a salary cap included in this for superintendency?
A recommendation, I didn't provide the full details of all the recommendations, but a recommendation from the MASA meet and confer team would be to provide a 2% raise to all administrators, but those in superintendency would receive, whoever's a non-superintendency, the highest rate would, would be provided that dollar figure. I believe the average percent superintendency would receive is 1.55% to 1.75%, something like that, depending on their income.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you showing us, I know you put a lot of work into the charts, you know, so the, it looks like if we gave a single dollar amount, everyone would get 1300, or the MEA at least would get 1,333. So that's, for a first-year teacher, you know, we're talking like 200 and change more. So, I don't know, we've kind of been going back and forth a little bit between dollar increases versus percent, and I understand that in your meet and confer, that they just wanted the 2%. So looking at that, it doesn't seem to be a big, significant difference.
So I want to concur and agree for sake of discussion. We had this, this, I guess I'm going to call it democratic process, in which we have these employee groups come together, they make, they have an opportunity to express their voices and the things that they would like to see happen, and I think this is how we honor the process, by listening to them and see how much we can actually meet and agree with what they ask of us. And I do appreciate the time, the dedication, and also, I really appreciate our employees and how they take into consideration the limited funds, the resources, realizing the amount of people, and that a lot of our funds go toward people. So I do appreciate that our people come to the table with a great amount of reasonableness and consideration, and I really appreciate that when you're looking at your livelihood and trying to get the best offer for your family. So I do appreciate the time, the dedication, and for a job that's hard in this market. So thank you so much for that, and I look forward to going forward and honoring what our employee groups have asked us for.
Dr. O'Reilly?
Just I, I, Rick, I agree with that, the, we need to give our employees as much as we possibly can, and I hope we are, and we're taking full advantage of classroom site funds and other things like that to give our classroom teachers as much money as possible.
Mr. Wing, I have a, I have a question. On the MESA, third bullet point on that slide, and, and we, we have a temporary change in the minimum resource center aid allocation. The resource center aid allocation, we're giving five more hours. And, and I'm, I'm learning that this is going to pose a problem for some employees, because most library, or I want to call them librarians, but the, but the, but the resource center aides don't just work in the resource center, they work in the office too. So for example, if you've got an employee that works 19 hours in the front office and works 10 hours in the library, if we bump that person up to 15 hours, now they've got 34 hours, and now they're eligible for benefits, and now they're too expensive. And now we're putting some of our employees in a quandary. Do, do we have a, a way to alleviate that situation so that we get our personnel in the library where they're desperately needed, and that they're promoting the love of reading and the importance of reading, but that we honor the employees and don't put them out of a job?
Certainly, and for those who may not be aware, we do have a formula where we provide an allocation depending on various components, mostly your student enrollment at your school. The minimum hours we provide for the resource center aid is 10 hours per week, and that example that President Hutchinson provided was such, the 19-hour office person who also does 10 hours library. We, part of our story and interest that we discussed in MESA meet and confer was the 29-hour barrier, and one of the, quite a few areas we want our design team to look into is that.
Okay.
Now, the five hours being, we're going to, the recommendation would be to temporarily increase it from 10 hours to 15 hours per week next year while we await for the design team's quality work and recommendations. The 15 hour, the five hours doesn't have to go to that individual, it goes to the school, and so maybe the individual doesn't want the 15 hours, regardless of whether they have that 29-hour barrier or whatever, it's to provide more resources to the resource center. So each school, like it is now, I, I'm pretty sure it's safe to say there's some, because not inconsistencies, every school is making a decision based on their needs, it doesn't always match the other school's needs. And so the, for this purpose, this temporary recommendation would be to give the school five hours more, and then it could be applicable to the current person who's working 19 hours in another setting, and could take on five more hours to be the 24-hour aid.
Okay. So we're letting them work it out by sight. Okay, terrific, all right. I'm going to just concur with my, with my colleagues that we have to stand by the recommendation of our employee groups. They've, they've surveyed, they've talked, and we've been doing this since October. And I just want to make sure that we honor the process and that we abide by their recommendation.
I have one additional question, I'm not question, but comment, before we, Madam President calls for the vote, and like always, it is definitely our desire, if we're in, as we've had, been in the past, we understand the climate is, you know, questionable, if additional funds do become available, we revisit allocating those additional funds as we've done in the prior year.
I can speak for everybody, we wish we had more funds, and we hope to get more funds, in which we will reconvene. The governing board on February 7th, I believe, approved contract language in our contracts to ensure that we have that flexibility. We did anyway, but we made it more official or current. So thank you, governing board, to that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears, for clarifying that and making sure that our employees know that if there's more money available, we, we are firmly flexible in making sure that we, that you get it. Okay. I think our discussion is over at this point on this item, and so seeing no objection, we're going to move on to the potential bond and budget continuation. And at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Thompson to present information on the bond and budget continuation in Mesa Public Schools.
Madam President, again, and members of the board, I'm going to, in the interest of time and the lateness of the evening, kind of jump to the chase here. You've seen several of these slides before. What's different in this conversation is this conversation is about 2023, because we need to make that decision. I actually, just before the board meeting, received a notice of election from the county elections office, saying that they have to be notified in writing of a November 7th, 2023 election by May 11th. So we actually have a due date we hadn't had before, and so we are working backwards from that to accomplish this decision. Several of the slides that you have in front of you are similar to what we all talked about during the work-study session, so I'm not going to rehash that, but I want to highlight that this is in the vein of a conversation around 2023. As I talked about before, a seven-year budget continuation, while that's what the voters vote on, it really is more of a five-year continuation, because in year six and seven, the continuation is phased out, so we need to consider the vote prior to the end of the phasing out, which is really in a five-year period, not a seven-year period. One of the questions that came up during our study session was, what was the 15% about currently? So I wanted to highlight the, these were the items presented to the voters. We've been able to achieve excellent class sizes, hire counselors, increase our school safety staff, just many successes around these additional dollars. The potential impact of a new bond is really, I almost want to call it a bond continuation, because we're really wanting to keep doing the work we've been doing. It's not, these are not new concepts, we've been master planning high schools, we've been renovating elementaries, probably the one area we haven't delved into as much is our junior highs, which definitely need to be part of a future discussion. Within that, we've been doing HVAC work, security improvements, classroom renovations, and developing workforce facilities like you see at Mountain, or at Mesa High, wow, I'm going to do it tonight, reference the wrong school. You've had a presentation around the idea of how much we would consider this conversation not done at this evening, I'm just presenting to you why we would probably be having a conversation around 500 million, because we have seen quite an increase in just some of the general ideas of inflationary, we saw our high school projects increase quite a bit. We are really getting to the point of needing to not just repair buildings, but actually look to replace them. Some of our particularly elementary school facilities, as I mentioned in the last bond, elementaries are not built in the same structured way that a high school, even a junior high is, they're just not as durable. So as they age, they age faster, they need to be addressed, and at some point, just trying to fix them becomes problematic, and maybe they just need to be, the entire building needs to be replaced, or the entire school needs to have a new, new facility. All of the considerations we're talking about right now, both with the continuation and the bond, would have no tax increase. That is not to say that, you know, yes, there is a tax associated currently with this funding, but that tax would be a continuation, not a new tax, not an increase in tax, but a continuation of an existing tax that has been used to support our schools for the, for many, many years, both on the override and with bond elections. Quick pictures of some of the great work that we've been able to do so far. Keeping in mind, bonds are not just about buildings, we also introduced the one-to-one technology initiative. This is really still one of the primary funding sources that would help us keep that initiative running successfully in our schools. We were well-positioned, obviously, when the pandemic hit, all of this need has expanded since that time. We've also been introducing security systems beyond just the idea of fencing, but video cameras, lockdown systems, and other solutions to make our schools safer. So, I just wanted to get through to this slide, because this is really what we need to talk about. If we're going to consider a 2023, we are up against a time clock, and we need to do these next steps, but we really shouldn't do these next steps if the board is not in agreement, or not at this point, at least conceptually, thinking that you're ready to support a 2023 election. Why do I say that? Because just as we've had much discussion this evening, this is always a chicken and an egg issue for you and for us as administration, where we don't want to put you in a difficult spot, where we've talked too much with the community, and now they feel like they're doing something, but at the same time, we want to give you an opportunity to weigh in on whether we move forward. So that's how we've been walking through these pieces to try to get to a place where we don't have all the information, we haven't gone to the community and had the detailed discussion that would happen next, as is laid out here, where we would do some discussions next week with our parent council, follow that up with some virtual meetings, we're actually going to have two, we'll run, run them simulcast in English and Spanish. We use this methodology prior for the ESAR discussion, and we're going to follow that same methodology. We find that the virtual seems to honor our community's time and our parents' time, and those who are looking to be in person can join us at the parent council. So, but again, we don't want to step into all of that, because you can, the assumption will be, if we're going to have that conversation, that we're leading towards a conversation about an election coming soon. And we don't want to put you in a position where the community's starting to believe we're doing this work, and then bring it back to you, and we're really not ready to do that work, or we want to consider 2024. So really, that's where we're at this evening, it's not a vote, it's just a discussion, as was presented earlier. You guys don't get a lot of opportunity to talk as five individuals unless we place this on an agenda item. So I will turn it back to you and allow you, your conversation, available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do we have any comments or questions, concerns at this time during our discussion item on the bond and budget continuation?
I'm ready to start, start a discussion. I know the time has spent. We, we're at a point where we definitely have to make a decision and actually start moving in that direction, so kind of putting my cards on the table, I believe, with the evidence of the voters, what we're looking to do, that we need to move forward with the election in 2023, given the fact that we know a presidential election has a lot going on. And one of the things is, we want people to be focused on our message, understand our messaging, we're going to do amazing, we're going to have amazing campaign around our messaging, in my little slide thing, I'll talk about innovation, and we are doing amazing work with what has been given to us in the forms of our bonds and overrides, and to, and as Mr. Thompson talks, talked about just a minute ago, was continuing that work. And in order to do that, I think we start the process, get out there, we've kind of talked about if then, kind of. start the process, get out there. We've kind of talked about if-then kind of situation, which I don't want to even say the words if-then, but this is our only opportunity for if-then. There's no if-then if we postpone doing this election in 2023. I do understand costs. I do understand all of those things, but there's a cost and benefit on both sides. Either way, we're going to continue to appeal to some of, part of the same population, whether we do it in a presidential year or we do it in this year. And I think what makes the difference is the messaging and helping our community understand the why, the reason, because we do know we are a pro-public education community and we want the best for our kids. So I believe we go forward and actually spend our time not getting caught up in the hoopla.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Mrs. Ellingson?
I'm also okay moving forward in 2023. I would just like to recommend with my strongest recommendation possible, that on this bond, we have on there that we will remodel all high school and junior high bathrooms. I believe that's an issue that's going to continue and it's just going to get worse. And, you know, I'm talking brick and mortar in between stalls and little holes in the front so you can see only one pair of shoes and open sinks and create, because I think gone are the days that we could have a closed bathroom. We're noticing that's what our SAG students are telling us is an issue. I'm hearing it from the grapevine through all the kids that I'm in contact with and teachers and administrators that it's a problem. So, and we've had many community members come and share their concerns. So I would strongly suggest that that makes its way onto this bond. And I think that could also help.
Else? Dr. O'Reilly?
I asked Superintendent Forlis what her recommendation was. It was 2023. I think they've looked at it a lot more than we have, given it a lot more thought. So I think I would go with the recommendation. The one question, this is the first time we're really talking about 500. It used to be 300 or 350 or 500 versus 600 as possibilities. My one question on that is, is, would that threaten the passing of the bond and override? We were going for an override and a bond together. And in some ways, it's easier to say a continuation of a bond versus an increase of a bond. So I'd like to get your ideas, Scott, your opinions. That's the one question I have from what came up tonight.
Dr. O'Reilly, thank you for highlighting that. That was only to highlight the need to probably increase. We will use the community process of these meetings and meet with an advisory group to finalize a discussion on the amount and a justification for the amount. So I'm not asking for any of you to decide that. And maybe it's 300, maybe it's 400, maybe it's 500. The suggestion is just, it's probably going to be higher than 300 because of inflation and other problems we've had. But in complete respect, that's not, you're not making that decision tonight. And we will bring you information back from your community on what they're thinking is reasonable. Because maybe 300 is more comfortable for them, maybe 500 is not. So we don't have that information either. We're going to get that feedback for you. Thank you.
Okay, so Mrs. Walden, do you have something? I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I mean, I'm probably outvoted, it sounds like, but I'll just give my two cents. The district doesn't seem to have any problem with the voters passing bonds when it goes to the ballot. I don't think that we should make the taxpayer incur the cost of a special election.
Well, this will be my second bond and my third budget continuation. So I'm going to speak from a little bit of experience. We passed our last bond election, if I believe correctly, by 900 votes in 2018. And it's, to mobilize the community is extremely hard work. The community comes together, but it's, elections are hard. And I would suggest that we would call for the election sooner the better. And that, as Mrs. Sears said, that our message is pointed and very direct. And that I know when I knock on doors to try to get support from the voters, when I tell them that the facilities need to support the programs for our kids, I get a very favorable response from the other side of the door. And with the budget continuation, and this is my one question for Mr. Wing, the bond is really going to be focusing on buildings and facilities. It always does. Last year, last time it was buses, too. But we've modernized our bus system and our kids aren't choking on bad fumes. We've got now new buses that are much cleaner and run much more efficiently. So it's going to be buildings. It's going to be facilities. And if we want to have programs that are engaging, programs that are meaningful, programs that engage kids in real-life learning, we need the dang facilities. And so that's super important. But the other thing is, is that the budget continuation is people. And our budget continue, our budget increase in 2018 did not pass. We had to go back in 2019 and do it again. And we got it to pass. And the community supported us because they realized that the budget continuation, a budget continuation is people. And our people are, is our staff. Mr. Wing, approximately what percentage of a teacher's salary in Mesa comes from the voters in this community voting to increase? No, well, this would be a continuation of their taxes to support teacher salaries.
Mr. Thompson can take that.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's 13. 13.9%. And that is all staff. That is not, that is not...
It doesn't matter.
That's bus drivers, that's teachers, that's everybody. It's not just one category.
And usually when you knock on the door and you tell that to a voter, that's real because that's people. So...
So with your history, we were at about 8%, and then when we were at 10%, and then we increased to 15. And of course, then more of their pay is now tied to that. So now it's 13.9%.
Okay, it's late.
Thank you for the discussion. And I think we had a clear step forward. And again, the next step is to provide you more information as to what the community's thinking and feeling about the more of the details and more to come. But thank you for having this discussion this evening.
Okay, our last item before adjournment is Portrait of a Graduate Highlights by a board member. And duck, duck, you're it, Mrs. Sears. And we are so looking forward to your presentation tonight.
Well, two things. I was about to say, I don't know how to use the clicker, so thank you.
Just hit the arrow to the right or the left.
Right or left? I didn't know where to point it.
Anywhere.
My theme, my presentation is We're All in This Together. Definitely late, but there's some pointed things that I want to kind of point out. One being the elephant that is sometime in the room, NSBA. 2013, attended their conference. It was exquisite in all that was offered. Myths and facts and truths about NSBA. So we do know that there's a few leaders who sent out an orthodox unauthorized letter that with NSBA, that we then have some apologies happening and pardon acknowledgements of what happened. And I'll just put it in a nutshell. When you mess up, fess up. And I believe going in integrity and moving in integrity is what we all need to do as an elected leader, as someone who's on a board, someone who operates in integrity and with dignity, that's what you do. NSBA has always been an organization of parents. So there's a lot of myths about NSBA not wanting parents involved. I would say 99.9% of us are parents. And our educational leaders, we're elected. And the framework is NSBA provides civil, is believes that education is a civil right and public education is America's most vital institution. NSBA, it's a advocacy body that has spoken up and delivered time and time again since 1940 on the promises of delivering funds to our public schools, these institutions we believe in and change the fabric for the best of America. They are hugely responsible for the billions of dollars that helped us recover from the pandemic. School safety, a huge topic with NSBA. And this is actually four of the workshops that was offered. So talking about in this time, the implications with leadership and school safety being a huge concern. There was another workshop that talked about the imminent threats that affects K through 12, our community and our population, safety in these times of uncertainty. And last year, here, my theme always going to be, we're all in this together. Turning our high-poverty schools into high-performance schools. I then have a few more things that talks about special education. We, as board members, professional development is so important because we don't get a chance to talk a lot. We don't get a lot of PD. This is the one opportunity to understand the complexity of the special education and the people who actually do this as a living. We have several different things that we may do, but none of us are specialists in special education. And it's so important to learn different things that apply, especially the laws. Yes, we have a lawyer, but we don't get, we don't have every day to reference all of these things that we, as board members, people assume we should know. And we actually operate as if we do know, making decisions about board policy. So partnering with Students for Achievement. We know achievement and outcomes and giving students agency and accountability is so important. Workshops all around that. One that addresses boards and successful boards, how we deal with our conflict and controversies. Because there, we are at a climate where a lot of things are going on. So you have divided boards who've actually set roadmaps and educational plans for us as board members. And it's so important that we're in a room and actually have someone to learn from. Because other than that, we sit here with our own ideas of how we get there, but we don't actually have carve-out any time to actually do the work of coming together as a board. We've had some updates on our school district and what happens in the school district. But as an entity, I believe that you need time to strive, thrive, and then perform, that they're actually storming, norming, and then performing. As a school district, I believe we go through that. But as a board, it's difficult to do that if we don't have any time that we learn together and actually come up with commonalities. Also, in the empower school through continuous improvement, I've, we learned a little bit just by kind of word of mouth, this process that was happening in our district with, of course, our special education and all of that. That's a lot. And to learn, to know, and to really understand what that means. Also, there's a whole section, and actually four different sections, on parents' rights in education. As a parent, what are our rights as a board member? How do we actually help parents advocate more? Many of us want parents to advocate more and know the avenues. When a parent has a need to speak up for their child, IEP, we actually usually have to go find a professional to figure out how that's doing it. So it's so important for us to, someone to educate us and sit us down as school board members. And we have a learning opportunity. This is a huge responsibility, and we shouldn't take it lightly. With anything I've done in life, I started off with learning and having education. So our professional development and learning is critical. We have, lastly, how to pass a bond election with innovation and opportunity and excellence. There was a whole presentation there that was vital, and I wish everyone was there when it comes to marketing, learning. But really, what are you showcasing? And, you know, people may not be, and I always say, people are not all thrilled about the underwear. They're more thrilled about the dress. But at the end of the day, you need to have clean underwear and you need to make sure everything's going on right with that. So it's important that we learn how to put innovation in place, but also make sure that we have AC and all of that, and talk about opportunity, excellence, and innovation. As we finish just talking about the next generation workforce, our community, if we just keep saying next generation workforce, they have no idea what we're talking about. So it's important for us to actually use a lot of the things that they talked about to get the word out. All right. So lastly, I'm not going to read all of this, but this just talks about boardsmanship, learning how to do the job and what the job is. Yes, we have guardrails on. We have our people in front of us that we look to. But there is a lot with this job. So it's important for us to go to school. That's what we tell kids. So you got in there, parliamentary procedures, which tonight you say there was one. I was like, okay, I think I know what I'm doing. Let me clear and check because I am in an organization where we use Robert rules all the time. But it's always important to spend more time with it. And it would be great to spend some time, concentrated effort, and gelling together as a board doing that. So I'm also advocating for us to do more of this. So you have parliamentary things in there. You have superintendent relationship with the board. And how that relationship increases, and when you increase that in that functionality, you increase outcomes in the district all day long. Because as a board, you're bringing your unique life experience and everything you have, and you're bringing all that knowledge together, and you're really getting somewhere quicker with your kids. Like they always say, if you want to do, if you want to go fast, but if you want to go by yourself, but if you want to go far, come together collectively. So hence, greater tools to do that. All right, Red Mountain grads, encouraging and inspiring globally. As I started with the theme, We're All in This Together, I'm highlighting the Bonner family. This family is really close to my heart. There are people who lived in the Mesa community. Actually, they have eight kids. Of the eight kids, four of them were babysitters for me when my kids were young. So Yehosh, Clotil, and Obah, and there's Nola. Those four actually are all recording artists. So they have attended all Mesa Public Schools. So I went to Shepherd and Red Mountain. Clotil, very something really interesting in her. Powderpuff Girls League, so actually first female football player in Red Mountain. Most people forget that history, that we actually had a female. Started off in a powder puff league there at Red Mountain. Lastly, Obah Bonner is actually a writer for Paramount and Hasbro, but he's also a recording artist. And a song he has is We're All in This Together. So at a later time, you can look up his songs. Absolutely beautiful. But, you know, just some interesting things about the family, LDS family. As you can see, they're a black LDS family. So for me, cultural anthropology is my pastime. So I learned a lot from this family about the black experience being LDS. And again, for Black History Month, they came to Mesa and talked to kind of some of our schools about their opportunities and where they are and what's going on. So I was happy to sit down and talk to them about that in Mesa Public Schools and their particular gift back. Red Mountain High School. So I started with them and performing arts because I've done a lot of performing arts with Red Mountain. Not performing, but actually sitting in an audience. So Jukebox Hero was the Broadway concert that I attended there at Red Mountain. And so... And so, as I say, New Orleans, laissez bon temps rouler, let the good times roll, and they do. So I appreciate all of the performing arts. And I always remember people, remind people it's part of STEAM. So I had STEAM away with, with music, musicals, and just a few things they did. Young Lions Broadway Concert. There's, they're currently concluding some performances and basically focusing on preparing for life, the workforce, and college, because there's a lot going on, as we saw the young people being acknowledged tonight. All right, well, so, and I'm also in my neck of the woods. So I hardly ever report about where I live, but I love my community. And I just want to say hey to Principal Erin, because definitely he's missed me walking around the neighborhood. So he actually calls me every once in a while to ask me what's going on with that. So I was, so I recently did a trek to see what's going on up there and being really happy about what's going on with Stem and STEAM at Los Indes Elementary. So what you're seeing before you is the bigger picture is their sustainable garden, and they have, let me make sure I get it right, a 2,000-gallon tank that captures rainwater, and they have tons of STEAM labs and all of that. I probably don't do it justice, but just saying, this is a very huge project that is happening in Los Indes with a lot of pride, a lot of community support, and just really responding to the call of climate change. And then you see in the little one that Ms., one of our counselor, Ms. Libby, she was nominated and won the Life Changer Award for being a counselor there in the community. So that's a banner that's up, and this is a great honor for, in our school district, we have so many people winning national competitions for their amazing service that they, that they afford and give to our children, and we're just very grateful. So with that, that concludes my presentation. But with that, I just wanted to say I'm grateful for the opportunity and love living in my community. I appreciate serving. So today, I wanted to take a little time to just give just maybe 1/100 of the amazing work that's happening in Mesa Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sears. That was, that was terrific. And it's always, I love hearing from our fellow board members, all our different perspectives, because we bring to the table what's, what's happening. And, and there are great things happening in Mesa Public Schools every day. With the conclusion of that part of our agenda, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So move.
I second.
I'm calling for the vote. Ms. Sears, an affirmative? 5-0 vote for adjournment. Thank you all, particularly those of you that stayed this whole time. Appreciate you.